Start the meeting for May 9th, the Auburn Main Planning Board. Ms. LeBlanc has an excused absence this evening, and I will be taking her role this evening. I'm gonna start with the roll call this evening. We'll start on the left.
Riley Bergeron.
Aaron Finnegan.
David Trask.
Paul Jacques.
Evan Seer.
Tim DeRoche.
Amanda Garrett.
And we have another member absent, Tony Ferraro, so I will be elevating both of our associate members, Tim DeRoche and Amanda Garrett, to voting members this evening. So, item number two is to minutes to review the March 28th, 2023, and April 11th, 2023 meeting minutes, and all those meeting minutes are available on the YouTube channel from the, that you can get to from the Auburn site as well.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of both meetings.
I second.
All does in favor? Seven zero, it's approved. Okay, item number three. This is a public hearing on a text amendment. The City Council directs the Planning Board to make a recommendation on whether to eliminate the income standard in all areas outside the Lake Auburn watershed overlay as an ordinance text amendment as shown on the attached proposed text changes. This item is pursuant to Article 17, Division 2 and 3, as shown on the proposed text changes available at, on the Auburn Main website and in the Planning Department in City Hall. This item is pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance or zoning map. I'll open it up for staff to...
Thank you. The purpose of this public hearing tonight is to hear from the community, to review the latest draft ordinance text, and to make a recommendation to the City Council on eliminating the income standard outside of the Lake Auburn watershed. At the March 28th meeting, the Planning Board recommended the following. Riley Bergeron made a motion, Tony Ferraro second, to not recommend the elimination of the income standard without a replacement standard that maintains a connection of housing and agricultural uses, of which the draft version they'd seen at that time, and we'd require, which took into account the draft version that they saw that night, and would require one more public hearing to develop the new standard. The motion was clarified to recommend that they not remove the income standard until such time there is a reasonable alternative, and that the Board was telling the City Council that they have a draft of an alternative and need an additional hearing in order to vet it publicly. Mr. Bergeron accepted that clarification and that passed seven zero. Since then, the City Council and Planning Board held a joint workshop on April 18th to review the draft ordinance text, and with feedback from staff and legal counsel, the City Council and Planning Board recommended changes to that draft in preparation for the public hearing tonight. Staff's role in this process is limited to providing a recommendation to the Planning Board and carrying forward the Board's recommendation, and ultimately implementing the Council's decision. The draft for the public hearing was included in the packet online, as well as distributed to the Board, and public notice was posted on the city's website, in the newspaper, and at City Hall. Staff's recommendation to the Board remains as we presented at the March 28th meeting. We recommend that the proposed changes not be approved, but that a text or map amendment changing the zoning to residential and defined areas of the ag resource protection zone outside of the Lake Auburn watershed would be a good alternative to meet the residential demand with fewer unintended consequences. This could be accomplished by amending the specific portions of the zoning map from ag resource protection to a residential zoning designation. We gave some examples of the zones that could be used, low-density rural, low-density country residential, suburban residential, or T42B, as well as others that already exist in the ordinance. The Council and the Board could, as an alternative, decide based on citywide planning and conservation and economic services valuation maps. We talked a bit about that in the development of the draft ordinance. The city is collecting data on existing city service costs, which could be used as part of that consideration, and that option would uphold the income requirement, the remaining ag resource protection, and would necessitate a comprehensive plan future land use map change that could be facilitated over a period of eight to 12 months. That essentially would combine a modified version of the residential strip maps that we had seen in the previous discussion while still maintaining the concept of growing outward from the city core. It also creates significant new opportunities for housing and leaves much of the ag resource protection zone function in place. Staff recommendation could be modified based on the Council housing goals, environmental constraints, economics, and public input during that period. An alternative connection between housing and agriculture, as well as other permitted uses, not just traditional farms, could also be considered as part of that consideration. The reasons for that staff recommendation is listed in the staff report as follows. We do have a shortage of housing that is driving prices beyond what's attainable for many. This market scenario has developed rapidly during the time the comprehensive plan update was in progress and afterwards, after the updates were approved, and I think we all recognize that that reality warrants some reconsideration as far as where we have housing opportunities in the city. The comprehensive plan divides the city into growth areas, limited growth areas, and non-growth areas. You can see those on the map on the screen with the sort of central core of the city, green being growth area, and then the lighter tan or yellow color being limited growth, and then restricted or no-growth areas in the pink on that screen, whereas most of our agricultural resource protection zoning. The comp plan reaffirms the basic objective that development Auburn should grow out from the historic cores, those of downtown, Danville, New Auburn, West Auburn, East Auburn, the existing villages or established neighborhoods. The policy's been in place since the city's first comprehensive plan over a half a century ago, and has continued to guide the city's land use planning ever since. The plan does not favor leapfrog development in the outlying sections of the city, and this pattern is often referred to as suburban sprawl, and the language from the comp plan says this is not considered desirable for Auburn. The next reason, the comprehensive plan recommends the following for ag-zoned areas. I won't read all of it word for word, but "purpose or objective to preserve and enhance the agricultural heritage of Auburn, to protect the city's natural resources, and open space while maintaining the economic value of the land." The district is characterized by rural, very-low-density development pattern that limits sprawl and minimizes city service costs. The district encourages recreational development. It encourages the city to consider allowing housing accessory to other uses beyond just traditional farms as a means of protecting open space and providing public access to outdoor destinations. The district is intended to serve as a land reserve, protecting valued community open space and rural landscapes while maintaining the potential for future development. The allowed uses, I won't read the whole thing, but I think one of the largest points is that the residential uses in the district, according to the comp plan, should continue to be limited to accessory residential development as part of either commercial agriculture, natural resource use, and not just traditional farms, that there should be some expansion. The comp plan recommends that. It lays out a series of development standards that pretty closely match the existing ag zone, but reaffirms that housing should be accessory to and allowed use and not its own principal use, and that the residential density standard should be maintained, and currently that's one, not more than one housing unit per 10 acres. Reason number five, the current draft does not maintain a connection that requires housing to be accessory to commercial agriculture or natural resource use. That's staff's opinion, because really the current income standard is the entirety of the connection to current agricultural uses for houses. There certainly may be alternatives. The city made a significant, I think it's significant anyways, change in 2019 when we changed the standard to 30% of household or median income for the city of Auburn rather than 50% of household income, and really that set a lower bar from a percentage standpoint, but it also set a bar that is the same for everybody if you're using the medium income standard, instead of the situation where you have one, let's say in a household, you have one high-income earner, that household would have to earn more from agriculture than a household that doesn't have a high-income earner. So it really leveled the field as well as reduced the percentage is part of that change. The decision to allow residential development, development throughout the ag RP zone with ordinance and comprehensive plan amendments should be designed to not require 10 acres per lot. I think if the decision is made that residential uses are to be allowed without being accessory to agriculture, we could do so in a way that maintains the average density of 10 acres but doesn't require 10 acres to be sold off and used up for each house lot. Just as an example, if you had 100 acres, somebody could create, and it had enough frontage, somebody could create 10 lots that are 250 feet wide and 1,750 feet deep, and that's not a very usable lot shape to achieve the 10 acres. If, if the decision was to be made to allow one housing unit per 10 acres, I think we could look at ways to do it that that 100 acres could become 10 one-acre house lots, and the other 90 acres could remain available for those rural uses as sort of a cluster subdivision, or some variation of that, but not require 10 acres for every house lot to chew up that land faster than it needs to be. The city has been able to make decisions about how and where to grow. Intentional decision-making is desirable. I think it's been impossible for most communities that were not as forward-thinking as Auburn, and as the comp plan recommends, growing from the core outward, I think it's afforded Auburn the opportunity to, to consider changing circumstances, the need for food, or the need for forest products, the need for housing, the need for industrial land, and respond to those changes over time by having the ag zone as sort of a land reserve, and I think that there's, there's been a lot of value in that for the city of Auburn. The city is dedicating significant resources to this discussion. It's an important discussion, but there are certainly ways that we could create more housing opportunity in Auburn that's not spread over the entirety of the ag zone, if that's, that's what the Planning Board and Council wanted to pursue. If the city does choose to amend the comp plan and zoning to allow for housing in the ag-zoned areas as a principal use without a connection or accessory status to farms or other permitted uses, again, we'd strongly recommend that if that decision's made that we consider allowing smaller lot sizes while maintaining that overall density of one unit per 10 acres, limiting or prohibiting new public roads outside of growth areas, limiting other service demands on roads outside of growth areas such as solid waste pickup. One way to do that is to not allow new public roads, and then the private roads require private hauling. That happens on some private roads already, and potentially limiting residential subdivisions outside of those growth areas so the growth happens more slowly over time. So that's the staff recommendation that we made on the 28th with a little more explanation, and we're happy to answer questions.
Okay, does, does the Board have any questions for staff at this time?
I do, just, so just to be clear, the, the staff recommendation is, stays with a little more consistency from what you just said compared to the meeting that we had, the joint meeting with the Council where we went through some proposed language, correct?
Yeah, so staff is, staff's recommendation is really based on the comp plan and what we believe to be sort of best planning practices. We will, you know, we're here to help host the public hearing, and we recognize the Board has to make their own decision, and when you make your recommendation, we'll carry that to Council as our own from there, but we don't recommend a draft that's before you as the answer, I guess, to the, the question of housing in the ag.
So I guess I need clarification on your last statement. You're saying that staff's recommendation is in keeping with the comprehensive plan, but in order to implement staff's recommendation, we would need to have a major revision of the comprehensive plan, not just with what sorts of uses are allowed where, but we would actually have to redraw the future land use maps, correct?
So yeah, I think there's two pieces to that. In the ag zone as the entirety, there could be an alternative that maintains a connection between housing and uses that are allowed in the ag zone?
Staff does not recommend language that is doing that. You're recommending solely what you proposed on March 28th?
Well, and I think that there, the combination of those two, so you could certainly change the ag zone to have a different connection than income between agriculture and other uses and housing, and that would be consistent with the comp plan. No required amendment to the comp plan. I guess what staff is also suggesting is that there is room for expanding residential areas. That piece of it would require an amendment to the comp plan.
So I'm hearing staff's sort of sole concern with the language in front of us is that it doesn't tie residential uses specific to agriculture or natural resource uses?
Exactly.
Yep. The alternative being proposed is to rewrite portions of the comp plan?
If you wanted to expand the residential opportunities that are not accessory to agriculture or other natural resource-based uses, which is what the draft does, then you could do that, that would require a comp plan amendment, but you could do that in a way that concentrates those housing units in areas that are closer to the core of the city. So you could, you could create an equal amount of housing opportunity but not spread it out through the entirety of the ag zone, and that's what staff's suggesting.
But that would still be taking land out of the ag zone?
Absolutely.
Within the future land use plan and within the current zoning?
Correct.
In order to change it from low-density, one unit per 10 acre, to a high-density development?
Sure, yeah, that, I, we recognize the desire and need to create housing opportunity, and we're suggesting that it could be done in a more concentrated way. But again, yes, that would require an amendment to the future land use map.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
One question that I have is, I know we heard from a number of residents who wanted the opportunity to build a home on land that they were in, they were in the ag zone, they had no intention of being a farmer, but that, that's where they lived, or had land in that spot and would like to live there. How do we address that in the staff's plan?
Yeah, I think that we haven't suggested a way to fully address that. I think that's still an issue that, that remains for discussion. There is some public comment, including in your packet, that I think aims at, at addressing some of that, but we don't, we don't have the answer to that, that question.
If the...
Just if I could add a little more to that, David, we did, we did do some GIS analysis. I know the conversation came up, well, how many, how many lots are out there that's available, right, if we're talking about lots under 10 acres? That was specific, and maybe those 10-acre lots don't necessarily have that tie to ag currently even right now as we look at it. Certainly that the comprehensive plan would maybe still need to be updated at that point, but there's, there's actually 65 lots like that, a lot more than what I had thought, and we, that to me is surprising. We did an initial analysis at the end of last week. We grabbed a little bit more than what we did. We scrubbed it again, and we just got the data yesterday, so I'm sharing that with the Board as new information, but it certainly, it certainly elevates that idea that you get at, that there's, you know, there's people out there that couldn't even have a farm that own land in Auburn and that have owned land in Auburn for a significant amount of time. So I just add that as additional information to think over.
If the reason that, the reason this question was first raised was because of the LD 2003 potentially making the income requirement illegal, and staff's recommendation still leaves income requirement as a standard in the remaining ag zone, correct?
We, we don't have a good alternative at this point.
Yep. So would it be staff's opinion? Has any rulemaking changes at the state level changed your opinion on LD 2003 affecting our income requirement, or has that stayed the same?
So I think we have the final rules now, and we're looking closely at those. I think at a minimum, they allow for an accessory dwelling unit on a lot that already has a single-family home. I don't know that they're going to allow for, you know, one to four units on vacant land, but that's still something that, that we'll need to sort out, and we'll need to make amendments to our zoning ordinance as part of accommodating LD 2003 to be compliant with that and to make it clear what is and isn't allowed.
Directly prior to the workshop that we, joint workshop we had with Council, I was able to jump into one of the Zoom workshops that staff at the state was providing for residents and municipal officials to seek clarification, and has something changed since then? Because I'm hearing you're saying that they may not, LD 2003 may not allow the, the four dwelling units, but questions that were raised during that meeting seem to indicate that that, that was most certainly the language in LD 2003, and that the rulemaking hadn't changed that. So is there, is there something that's, that is keying you into a change since then?
I don't think it's exactly clear. It says where housing is allowed, so you may still be able to apply an accessory status to that, I'm not sure, but there are three other LDs that may affect how that ends up being implemented. One of them would prohibit a municipality from having any zoning district that doesn't allow for housing. That would include industrial and agricultural zones. There's another LD that would allow for agricultural zones to limit housing in a way that LD 2003 doesn't currently limit housing, and then there's some other ones tied to natural resources or water supplies that will likely be decided on between now and July, but we don't know which way they'll be decided on.
And Evan, just to kind of add to your, your, your point, so the underlying zone still will dictate, right? So, for example, you know, I guess I'm just going to be the guy that talks about the small lots tonight, but the 65 lots are still not available, even in, under LD 2003. So the underlying district still prevails, so, you know, like, so for the UR, right, we all know that the urban residential needs 10,000 square feet minimum, so that, that's what you need to have that, to have that four lot, four-building situation occur. So the underlying zone still prevails under LD 2003, and that's pretty clear in the rules.
Yeah, I guess my fear is that LD 2003 is written in such a way that says a zone is not going to circumvent this, and LD 2003 is very specific to lot size, buildable area, and makes no mention of any other restriction, which makes me fear that the state would say, than an income standard or any other standard other than allowable uses and building lot size is an attempt to circumvent the zone. I do have a follow-up question. So I'm glad that Eric brought up some of the LD, the LDs going through the State House right now. I think it's been clear that the Governor's Office and the Legislature is laser-focused on maximizing development of residential homes. So I have no reason to believe that they wouldn't move forward with a change to state statute that would essentially allow residential homes in any zone, no matter what. So to that end, I do have a question for staff. So staff's proposal for March 28th is essentially to leave the largest, a large portion of the zone, as is to go through the process of amending the comprehensive plan, to change land designations within the comprehensive plan, areas that are currently zoned, ag and the future land use, to change those to a higher density. My assumption is that if we're going to do that, the, the higher density is not going to be low-density country residential, which is one unit per three acre. If I remember correctly, staff was really talking about one unit per acre or smaller. I seem to remember at some point a quarter acre even, so that's a substantial change from the comp plan. Then we would go through a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment as well. I know that there's been a lot of discussion of the ag zone with regard to housing, promoting housing. My question is with regard to resource protection. So if it turns out that LD 2003 really will allow for up to four homes per lot, assuming that the lot is 10 acres, right, that was, that was clear, that you would need the minimum lot size, so you could do, you'd need 40 acres, but you could do four, four residential homes. What protections for resources such as soils of statewide significance, wildlife habitat, forested land exist in the current zoning?
There's not much there that specifically protects those. I think the difference between what you said and the way that I understand LD 2003 is we could apply the same minimum lot size with the exception, I think, of one accessory dwelling in it. You could apply the same minimum lot size to each new unit up to those four units as you apply to a single family, so a four-unit in the, in a zoning district that requires 10 acres per unit would require 40 acres for four units, but you can't be more stringent than that. My understanding is you can apply the same lot size to each unit as you do to the single family.
And in building those homes, the only protection for natural resources, open space, forested land, soils of statewide significance, agricultural soils, wildlife habitat, boil, would essentially boil down to, I guess, shoreline zoning would be the strictest thing that currently exists for a protection there?
Shoreline zoning locally, floodplain ordinance, overlays like the Taylor Pond or Lake Auburn watershed, although we're not talking about the Lake Auburn watershed with this particular change, and then the state standards for protecting wetlands or streams or rivers or lakes, the Natural Resource Protection Act as well. That gets into protecting wetlands, streams, rivers, but it doesn't do anything for soils of statewide significance.
So the minimum protections that are available and all... So the minimum protections that are available in all of their zones within the city, no additional protections for those resources? Okay.
Could considerations for those things be taken into account when coming up with the map amendments? Would that be some, uh, one way to address it so that we, those map and text amendments don't include areas of soils of state significance or?
So that, that's kind of the approach that staff had recommended by looking at the natural resource or soils constraints is to look, so use those sort of globally to then decide where we change the zoning to allow a higher intensity of housing rather than applying those on a lot by lot basis?
Yeah, Riley, I, I guess my question was, I understand that staff is, is, is recommended doing that within those areas that we might consider for higher density. But they would only be in those areas and would only be to define those areas. Meanwhile, the remainder of the agricultural zone would have no such protections for where a home could be built. The, the reality is it, it's difficult to build a residence because of the income standard. We've defaulted to the income standard as a resource protection measure. If LD 2003 essentially makes that a moot point, we're left with no protections for those resources in the ag zone because those protections don't exist in the ordinance. The only thing that exists in the ordinance is an income standard that has been a de facto, uh, protection.
So if we wanted those protections to address LD 2003, we'd have to propose text amendments in order to make it happen. Catherine, question for you on the map. I know back in March, the initial proposal pushed the change to residential pretty far out. In fact, you know, well out Powell Road, like it was just going to trap road. It was just going to be a big change. The, the adjustment here is we're going to look from the inside out. We're going to grow from downtown out. We're gonna, if, if we do this, we're going to look for key core areas to do the development change, not just.
Correct. So, um, some context, uh, for this map here, um, it takes a little bit of the, um, the zone extensions that we were seeing with the strip zones. Um, it might be kind of hard to see, but there's, um, this red, this kind of red overlay in here, that's kind of meant to show where the, the, um, the increased density, um, could go. And the reason that these areas in particular were the ones that we are suggesting, as the kind of the boundaries of growth are because they are closer in proximity to the core. They also are, um, in like over here, this is where like the Danville Village Center is. Here is, um, New Auburn. So all of those are, um, kind of extending out from existing villages, village centers is recommended. And also from the past comprehensive plans, at least some of these, um, were originally set aside to be used for, like industrial use by like the Turnpike, for example, over here. And, um, now staff believes that these areas are better suited for residential development rather than, um, industrial. So it, it, we think that this makes sense if we were going to, um, if we're really, if we want to increase housing, um, we, our recommendation is that we can do that, provide more housing in less land area.
And if we were to go down that road procedurally, would we have the opportunity to look at the different areas to, to determine what we'd like in versus what we wouldn't like in?
I think you definitely would. Yeah. Yep.
Trying not to get into discussion mode yet, but, um, so if we were to take the changes that staff is suggesting with really targeted areas of growth, well, extending out from the urban areas. We would need to, i- if we like the text amendment to protect against the other ideas that, uh, Mr. Seer was bringing up, um, we would need to do both, right? Protect the existing ag zone and then make zoning changes and map changes to the areas that were closer to the urban development.
You, you certainly could use pieces of that to, to achieve better protections for those natural resources as well as another component of that change.
Were the areas designated by staff for, um, uh, high density residential development? I'm hearing that part of the discussion was proximity, but are they at all based on, um, public water and public sewer at all? Are these things within a specific proximity to public water and public sewer?
So some of them are, um, north of the Turnpike, there are areas that we could extend water and sewer to. What we were hearing was that there was a, there was a two-part request from the council. One was to, um, eliminate the limitations of the residential strips. And what they meant by that was expanding the residential strips where they're 450 feet or 750 feet from the center line of the roadway to include the entirety of the parcel. And that's where this map came from is when we applied that standard, it left these red areas out. It left gaps in that that we thought were, if we were to apply that along the roadways, then we could also apply it to those interior pieces and we could really get a similar number of housing. Housing units out of an area that's more concentrated than applying that expansion of the residential strip to every residential strip all the way to the outskirts. So, um, that was just trying to provide a similar level of housing opportunity to what we believe the council was asking for out of that residential strips question, but, uh, to keep it closer to the core of the city.
Some of those red areas have no street frontage, correct?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, that would mean that there would potentially be new roads if that, that was the approach taken.
And this, these areas that would be expanded EMS already goes and has time to get from the firehouse to there and then Public Works is already going to these areas.
So they're, they're already going there. Um, we're working on an exercise with the manager's office to try to, identify an estimated level of service for EMS, for police, for schools based on land use types. So we can, we can look more closely at that. There is some capacity, but at some point, you know, you hit a trigger where there needs to be another station or more staff or another ambulance or, we don't have that exact threshold, but there is some capacity to absorb new residents. Uh, we had gone through this a couple of years ago and that estimated number was, um, 2,000 new homes, 6,000 new residents. The services at the time felt that there, there was enough room to accommodate that, um, for a new, especially rural housing because it has a lower level of service demand. I think we've learned since then that we're short on students. So one of the biggest cost components, um, which has shrunk over time because family sizes are smaller, is not as much per housing unit. And we're trying to get a good handle on that as well as part of that, that exercise.
One thing I've been considering is going through my head and I keep hearing people, I've heard it brought up several times about municipal water and sewer, uh, emergency services, stuff like that. Um, how equipped is our water and sewer system in regards to when this is all hashed out and say building begins down the, down the, down the road? How equipped is our municipal water and sewer in accompanying the demand of an influx of homes? Are we looking at, you know, we could handle 200 more homes? We could handle 20 more homes. I mean, I'm just looking down where, at what point in time is the city in a freshwater and wastewater crisis for homes that are in the municipal systems?
So we're, we're working on three studies right now with the water and sewer district. Um, one of them is the mall area. Um, the city council appropriated money to help us examine that ahead of time. Um, one of them is the mall area. Another one is, um, out South Main Street, uh, in New Auburn. Um, I don't think in our time, uh, here that we would see that go beyond the Turnpike, but we're looking at how it could be looped down Vicary Road and out South Main towards the Turnpike, um, for water and also looking at sewer. Um, and the third one is the Washington Street corridor. We have water and sewer along portions of that, but we don't have it all the way out, um, Washington and then along Broad Street, Hackett Road, um, in that area. So we are studying that. It's not something that the city, um, would typically pay for the extension. The development would typically pay for that. But we also, um, would look towards state and federal resources because tho- those are going to be obstacles. It's not that we can't serve the new development, but there would need to be extensions and some upsizing of lines or looping of lines to, to do that.
I understand that of running line, you know, dig a hole, put the pipe in kind of stuff, but I'm talking about the actual wastewater treatment facilities. Uh, the pumping station, there's tons of water in the lake, but at what point do those, that infrastructure becomes stressed due to the volume of, of housing that it currently serves versus what we could see down the road in X amount of time? I mean, are we near capacity of, of all that now or do we have a surplus or what?
We, we have capacity, but I think the other thing to consider is that a lot of this area that we're talking about would be outside of the service areas. So there'd be well and subsurface wastewater disposal on site. But we've been looking at those three primary areas, Washington Street, Broad Street, Hackett Road, um, New Auburn on South Main Street over to Riverside and then, um, the mall area as places where we could expand services, expand capacity by upsizing pipes. Um, and there is capacity to serve those areas on both the water and sewer side. But it's more localized in making sure that the, um, the piping to deliver the water and sewer is sized appropriately. But there is capacity to treat more wastewater and we've significantly reduced the amount of groundwater infiltration over the last couple of decades. So, um, that capacity can be used for treating actual sewer now.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Just, I, I think you, originally going back to Evan's comment and, and, uh, you know, density drives, you know, uh, public water and public sewer. If we're at one acre lots, it's not gonna, the economics is not going to support, uh, putting in the infrastructure. You know, that would be, that would be something that would have to be planned out. I think it really starts with a comprehensive plan in terms of, of anything, you know, south of the, of the I-95 corridor. Uh, if you're thinking about bringing water or sewer there, your density has to be higher. If we look at existing, uh, you know, our existing land use map now, probably suburban res is probably the bottom of, bottom of the rung. That's half acre lots minimum. So that's really where we need, we would need to be in terms of if we're thinking about bringing water and sewer there, we have to be at a minimum, suburban residential for this area for land use. And I think it started with originally with Evan's question. I just wanted to, you know, get, you know, get you guys thinking about that. If that's what the intent is of the city and we really want to get the density there to support water and sewer, that's really the bare minimum. We're, we're not going to get there at one acre lots. It just doesn't make any economic sense.
So I understand that the city isn't actually responsible for, we call it city water and city sewer, but the city is not actually responsible for those. It's handled by a different public entity. Um, right. So my question being there, uh, you know, with city staff, you're discussing the, the density. Those decisions aren't actually made in this building because we don't make those decisions. Has there been discussion with the public utility that is, uh, AWD that actually does govern those things? That where they have discussed, uh, under what circumstances they would be willing to run water and sewer? I ask because they're the ones that make the decisions. Uh, tax dollars that flow into this building don't go to pay for that. It's the ratepayers who get city water and city sewer who specifically pay for the, the pipes and things like that. So has there been a discussion though with AWD in determining what sort of density they would require before they would be willing to run those time, those utilities?
So, so they have a consultant, um, that they procured through a competitive process that models their water and sewer systems for them. Um, the city's contribution to modeling to examine those has been in partner with, with Auburn Water and Auburn Sewer using their consultant. So we're, we're at the table, um, but it's their consultant. We're paying the bill, um, but it's their consultant. So they're very engaged in that discussion. We are not at a point where I could tell you like what would they be willing to fund? Um, I think that their stance is generally that they don't fund, um, expansions of service on the backs of existing ratepayers. Um, so we'd really be looking at ways that we could bring in state or federal funds, use tax increment financing or other funding that the city, options that the city has. And developers paying for those extensions. Um, I don't, I don't believe that they would pay for any significant expansions of, of the system unless it's to serve existing customers fixing a problem.
Which brings us back to density. To make that cost effective, you'd have to have at least suburban residential. For a developer to get involved with that, it'd probably have to be even more dense than that, I would assume.
And, and I think you'd have to be closer to existing utility connections than the land south of the Turnpike. I don't think it's realistic to expect water and sewer to be, you know, significantly extended south of the Turnpike. There's a lot of area in between the existing water and sewer services and the Turnpike that could be that expansion for the higher density, half acre, quarter acre, um, could be more dense in some areas, but closer to the core of the city. Trying to relieve some of that housing demand on smaller lots that take up less land area that use those public utilities. But there's a market for both that and rural lots. Um, I think the city has the ability to offer both sort of products or both, both living situations, both styles of housing.
Any other questions? Okay, then I'll ask for a motion to open this up to the public comment.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor? We shall proceed. Okay, I'll ask members of the public to step up to the podium, state your name and address. And you have five minutes to address the board.
No. Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Ham and I live at 34 Vista Drive. I'd like to make some comments, um, regarding the comprehensive plan. Of course, the plan that we're talking about here is the 2010 comp plan with four chapter changes that were made in 2021. These were just approved by the planning board and the city council less than 18 months ago after a 13-month process reviewing the comprehensive plan. So broadly, there were four chapter changes, two of which are pertinent to the discussion tonight. One related to food access and growing the agricultural economy and the other to, uh, future land use. I would note that I've been provided all the materials by the city for this whole process and having reviewed all of them, it's absolutely crystal clear that the future land use discussion, the primary driver of that was the, the need for housing and to increase density. was the need for housing and to increase density. Even after that 13-month process, what did we come out with? Well, in Chapter 1K, there is a goal to strengthen and grow the agricultural activities in the ag zone. In Chapter 2, it identifies the agriculture and conservation district as no growth areas with residential development only when accessory to agricultural and natural resources use. So, the question that I would pose to the planning board is, given how we got here, what dramatic thing has happened in the last 18 months that would cause you to abandon the goals that are in the current comprehensive plan? Because that's what would be required to pass the changes that are in front of you. The second thing that I would point out is MRSA 30A under the land use regulations says that zoning ordinances must be pursuant to and consistent with a comprehensive plan. There is abundant case law in the state of Maine that reinforces the plain reading of this statute, including cases specific to Auburn. It's incongruous for the planning board to recommend a text amendment to the city council for adoption to something that's averse to the comp plan. If you move forward a text amendment, the city council's only option is either approve it, reject it, or send it back to you for further work. So, it makes no sense whatsoever to send them something that if they adopted it would be in violation of state statute. Should you send them a text amendment and they adopt something that's in violation of the state law, clearly there'll be an ADB appeal to Superior Court to vacate any such change. If you, as a board, decide that there should be some changes in the agricultural zone, what should be happening here as the next step is a review of the comp plan, not moving a text amendment forward. Because it's imperative that whatever you send up to the city council as a text amendment complies with the comprehensive plan. And clearly, as the staff stated earlier, what's before you from your last meeting and the staff's recommendation requires comprehensive plan changes, not just a text amendment.
Yes?
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. There are actually as many as four proposals that are before you in some form or fashion. First, there's the directive from the city council to inquire about removing the income standard, which was accompanied by some proposed text modifications, which Mr. Seer then took and made some very substantial, very industrious modifications to, in what has come to be known as the Seer proposal. The staff has not come forth with actual ordinance text, but has presented the body of a lot of factual components, which with some appropriate language around it, really does form the description of a new ordinance proposal. And there is the fourth proposal, which you have in your packets, which has come forth from a large group of people with agricultural interests of widely varying kinds, several dozen people in the group. This proposal would maintain the 10-acre lot size for an agricultural use and permit residential housing accessory to that use with a special exception for the smaller size lots that were in existence five and a half years ago, which is already in the present ordinance. This proposal would totally eliminate the income standard. The issue whenever there's been discussion about eliminating the income standard is, what standard are you going to use? This ordinance proposal would require that the use of the land for agricultural purposes be a bona fide agricultural use. Who's going to make that determination? It could be done, I believe, by the planning staff. The staff is very competent. And it also has within its range of activities the provision that it does make value judgments on certain kinds of activities within the city. For example, the dangerous building law, which is a state statute, but is enforced by the local planning staff upon recommendation to the council, ultimately calls for value judgments. So, the staff could make the same kinds of value judgments here. I would trust the staff to do that. If the staff or the council didn't want the staff to do it, you could engage on a, for a very nominal fee, I'm sure, an outside entity which has great expertise in this area. Fortunately, in this city, there is a financial institution whose sole business is making and evaluating proposals for use of land for agricultural purposes and the equipment to supply that land, which is the Federal Land Bank and the Farm Credit Service on Minot Avenue. That's all they do, is make those kinds of value judgments. They could be the entity to make those judgments. It wouldn't be very time consuming. If it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck. So, taken together, that is the basis of this large agricultural group's proposal. I do have one thing to say on my own that is not authorized by the group, which is that it's, I think, highly likely that perhaps some of the staff recommendations for removal of certain lots in the infill proposal that the staff has made could be done because there are some of the lots that are presently in the agricultural zone that are sand to gravel or full of ledge or otherwise not suited for agricultural purposes. That would be a very interesting exercise to engage with in the staff to see what lots might be included in that discussion.
Hi, I'm Camille Parrish. I live at 42 Lake Street. I'm a citizen who lives within walking distance of City Hall. And you may question why I should be concerned about the proposed text amendment before you to the ag zone ordinance. I don't live, farm, or engage in forestry there. But the one reason I am here is because namely, there seems to be a potential unnecessary increase in property taxes coming from this. I'm more than happy, excuse me, to pay my taxes for responsible allocation of city services, police, fire, public transportation, roads, schools, et cetera. However, I am not happy to pay, have my taxes go up because of expanded city services and costs that will be required from planning decisions that encourage sprawl, namely, very low-density residential development. This is exactly what the text amendment allows in the AGRP zone. I do not believe a majority of Auburn citizens would want their tax burden increased for this reason either. People might ask, does sprawl really increase the cost of city services? Analysis by Kruthers and Olferson of urban sprawl and cost of public services in 283 counties in the U.S. found that as you decrease housing density and extend city services over increasing distances, as would be the case in the proposal, city costs increase per household compared to residences close to the city center. So, yes, sprawl does increase city service costs. The increase in city service costs is one of the reasons sprawl is discouraged, smart growth is encouraged, and why the comp plan specifically lists the AGRP zone as primarily in the non-growth area. The current text amendment before you will lead to exactly this outcome. Higher taxes for all Auburn citizens resulting from development as it expands in the AGRP zone. Furthermore, the revenue generated from the new houses will not cover these city costs. We know from the Farmland Trust analysis of 151 municipalities that the tax revenue from any residential development does not pay for the city services required. And with sprawl, this difference between revenue from the houses and city service costs will only be larger than for a household located in the city core. So, expanded residential development in the AGRP zone, as allowed in the text amendment, will not pay for itself and in fact, will cost Auburn citizens much more than is currently the case for the city services in the current AGRP zone. Approval of this text amendment is thus a vote to increase property taxes for all Auburn residents over time in order to pay for residential housing that has no connection to even the stated purpose of the AGRP area. LD 2003 will only compound this issue with additional housing allotments. Remember that your decision tonight will impact the tax burden of citizens of Auburn for generations, as well as alter the character and function of this area, an area that has been in existence for over 60 years and the envy of many other cities. I urge you not to recommend this text amendment as viable alternative language to the current AGRP zoning ordinance. There are other proposals before you that will not have the detrimental tax and resource impacts that exist in the current text amendment. You have a choice.
Hi there. Katie Boss, Sevenmore Street. I previously served on the planning board in 2019. I also served as a city councillor from 2020 to 2021. So, I know firsthand how much work, how much effort, and how much responsibility you have as planning board members and how complex issues are that come before you. Of all the issues that I worked on in my time on the planning board and council, the future of the ag zone is the most complex and the most contentious, but it is also one of the most consequential. The decisions that you make here tonight will impact accessibility of farmland and outdoor recreational opportunities, the quality and availability of groundwater, wildlife habitat, and forest land. It will also impact the cost of city services and tax burden on every Auburn resident. And it has the potential to forever change thousands of acres of land. The role of the planning board is to consider how the proposals that come before you do or do not align with our comprehensive plan and to consider what unintended consequences they might have. The comprehensive plan is the foundation that guides your decision-making and your greatest resource in making these decisions is city planning staff. They have extensive experience in these issues and training and best practices in urban planning and development. They also have direct knowledge of the impact that decisions that you make will have on their workload from code enforcement to tax assessment. In my time serving in city government, I have never seen a more direct staff recommendation than that you have before you tonight. They have laid out in careful detail, both in their written report and in their presentation, all the reasons why you should not move forward with the proposal currently under consideration. In addition to staff's strongly stated preference for a model that consolidates growth toward the city center, they also make it very clear the multiple ways that this proposal deviates from the comprehensive plan. If you move forward with the proposal on the table tonight, it will be a direct contradiction of the recommendation of city staff, a direct contradiction of the will of a strong majority of Auburn residents as expressed in the multiple community surveys that have shown that residents want to see development concentrated toward the city center in order to preserve farmland, habitat, and open space. I urge you to find another path forward and I urge you to follow the process outlined by city staff and their recommendation.
Hi, Rita Mae Moran, representing 150 Sopers Mill Road in Auburn. I'd like to thank the planning board for listening to us tonight and for all its consideration. I'm the fourth generation to work our family farm. My great-grandfather was an immigrant and he purchased and built upon over 100-plus years over 600 acres between Lewiston and Auburn. He was a dairy farmer. He grew other crops in the healthy soils of our farm, which are still very viable. Many AGRP landowners' families knew him, did business with him, probably still remember him. They also participated in the thriving ag community, which Auburn has always prided itself on. Since my grandfather's, my great-grandfather's passing in the 1970s, the land has been divided multiple times between family members. It's been contentious, battled over inheritance probate, split up into smaller parcels for profit. It's been hard on all of us, family members that don't talk to each other to this very day. On a lighter note, when people come out to our farm, it's not touristy like a lot of people envision farms being. You know, we have a lot of, you know, very open farms here that do a lot of agritourism. But they usually stand at the top of the hill and look out onto our rolling land and comment on how beautiful and peaceful. And they can't believe they're in Auburn. Like, it seems unreal that this place is like a little slice of heaven. And this is a typical sentiment that we hear repeatedly. And every comment like this reinforces for us that we have something unique and irreplaceable and precious. For many people living, working, doing business, and thriving in the AGRP zone, we are a class of society which is being lost and suffocated out of existence, even as a new generation of agriculturalists fights to actually enter it. And there are young agriculturalists looking for affordable land to farm. On the topic of existence, I'm going to speak a little bit personally in regard to our view from the farm and not necessarily of the group. I'd like to speak on a point that is usually reserved for urban areas, seeking revitalization. And this is going to be on rural gentrification. And we hear a lot about urban gentrification, but we don't hear a lot about rural gentrification. Traditionally, gentrification has been considered a highly urban process, particularly relating to large towns and cities. The same process of gentrification is used in rural areas as well, such as the reinvestment of capital, social upgrading of an area by incoming higher-income groups, landscape change and upgrading, and often displacement of specific populations taking place in many rural locations. A clearer definition of this would be gentrification is one class's opinion and revaluation of a specific area for intended use and outcome. Disturbingly, the ever-encroaching crush of urbanization also plays a major part in the disappearance of the family farm and open space. The American Farmland Trust estimates an acre of U.S. farmland goes into development every two minutes. It's heartbreaking. Every two minutes, we lose more farmland. To sum it up, as a fourth-generation agriculturalist, to be able to appreciate this open space and be a good steward of the land, I plead to any and all not to break down these parcels of protected land which provide invaluable natural resources for human and societal sustainability, food, clean water, healthy ecosystems, recreational activities, which can only be utilized if our land is not sliced up into fragmented pieces. Those are irreversible actions, which futuristically have grave consequences. If the city won't take steps to protect the AGRP zone as it is now, landowners are going to have to take it into their own hands to fight for the protection of open space, healthy lands, good stewardship, and the future of agriculture in all its forms for generations to come, and they will come.
Hi, Chelsea Eaton, 576 Trap Road. I just want to make a brief comment about my concerns with what the proposal, the current Seer proposal could potentially do to increase property taxes further. Our property taxes went up last year substantially. It was shocking. And we seem to actually be losing services on some slow and steady level. We've lost spring cleanup, seems like recycling's going away. I'm not really sure what's going to be next, although I'm very concerned about what will be next, what will be going on the chopping block as far as city services. So, I'm very concerned about how this is going to increase property taxes even further and what this is going to do to the cost of city services. My understanding is that there's something like 18,000 acres in the ag zone currently. Seems like a lot of that is in South Auburn, which is where I live. I live practically in New Gloucester. I know from personal experience that it takes 15 minutes to get a fire truck to my house right now. It's a very scary 15 minutes when the back of your barn is on fire. But I'm just wondering if you are going to consider something like the Seer proposal, which really encourages a lot of sprawl and the potential for these vast tracts of land to be opened up to to be opened up to dozens or hundreds of homes. It seems to me like you're going to need a fire substation in South Auburn and a lot of other things, but in my, I know a little bit about fire service. If you need to put a fire substation in South Auburn, that's going to be tens of millions of dollars right there. That's one thing. Who's, how is that going to get paid for? And how are you going to staff that? You're going to need a lot more Eric Cousins, you're going to need more Karen Skammons, you're going to need staff across the board in short order if you're going to open up this amount of land to this many new homes and this many new residents, it seems to me. So I would like to see some serious numbers crunched here and some, some sort of study done to determine exactly how this is going to pan out before changes are made. I'm not a very eloquent speaker. I have here in front of me an op-ed that was written by Jane Coslow that I would like to submit to somebody as part of my public comment. There's some very good language in here that talks about the property tax increases and the cost of city services that will be inflicted on all residents of Auburn, not just the people living in the ag zone, but everybody in Auburn will see their property taxes go up. So I think that's the end of my comment. Can I give this to you? Thank you all. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and distinguished members of the planning board. My name is John Cleveland. I live at 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I'd like to first start by really complimenting the staff on a very comprehensive and thoughtful report that they gave you. They really gave some good direction in there, in some thoughtful direction on some of the risks involved if you proceed with the proposal that's before you now. One of the major things I want to talk about is the legal jeopardy if you proceed. That legal jeopardy arises out of the inconsistency that would develop between your comprehensive plan and your zoning changes. And just very quickly, I want to just note some of the things that your own planning staff has pointed out to you that would create those kinds of inconsistencies. In number two, numerical number two, if you look, the ag zone is listed as a non-growth area. That is inconsistent with residential development and would be one of the points on which you would be finding inconsistency. In number three, they point out that the comp plan clearly calls out that you build from the core and move outwards to make sure that services of the community that you have to be provided are kept as reasonable as possible for everyone. In fact, they say doing otherwise and building in the ag zone would be considered suburban sprawl and is not considered desirable for Auburn and would be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. In number four, they point out that the comprehensive plan recommends that the ag zone is intended to protect valued community, open spaces, and rural landscapes. That is inconsistent with residential development that currently is being proposed. In number five, the SEER proposal does not maintain control, connection of housing to agricultural uses. Clearly, it says in your zoning ordinances that there has to be that connection with the development within that area. In number six, it's important to note as well, and I'm glad that they pointed this out, under, under the current lot-size development, you only need 250 feet frontage on a road. If you had a 10-acre lot, which would be required, that would create a lot over 700, 1,700 feet long, and you could have that every 250 feet, assuming the depth was adequate to meet that. That's known as spaghetti lot development. That is an inefficient use of land for any purposes out there while sprawling development every 250 feet along the existing road. Consequently, the only conclusion that you can derive from the reports that you're getting and the information that you're receiving, that should Mr. SEER's proposal be adopted, it would put the city council in a position that if they adopted it, it would be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Now, I happen to be somewhat personally familiar with this. I have a unique position in this. In 1985, the city was sued when it changed its zoning ordinances and created a lot more development out in the ag zone, and it was taken to court at that time. I happened to have been the mayor then when that zoning decision was made, and I vigorously advised the city council not to adopt that because it was clear from the information we had that it would be in violation. They didn't do that. It went to court, and it was lost, and that is the case of Clayton, Haggett, and City of Auburn. I have the decision right here that shows that that happened. Please, let's not make the same mistake in 2023 that we made in 1985. We don't need any more lawsuits in this community.
I'm Rob Nielsen, 1045 Old Danville Road, also a homeowner for 23 years in Auburn, raised a child, work locally. We also, over 10 years ago, purchased 1016 in Old Danville, which is one of your red circles. It's a thin strip of land with the headway, with a pond, it's wet. We were planning someday possibly selling our house, building our retirement home in a little bit on the property, but within the current zone that you already provided us. So, and then the back acreage opens up and it's cliffs and a waterway that goes through and feeds the Royal River. So it's not developable, and it would be, unless you put a massive bridge or something, it's cliffs. And we have thousands of documented images of wildlife in our property, so there's no doubt we would protect that land in the future, so it's not going to be developed. We do intend to build a retirement house. If we get rezoned, we're probably just going to protect the whole thing and just stay in our current house, and we think that would just be a bad, a bad plan. We really love the land, and we'd love to live there. We do, my wife's a master gardener, so we plan on having greenhouses and having a farm there, so. And we wouldn't even have to develop on the ag part, so we, but we definitely have intention of preserving the forest, and I'm growing culinary mushrooms under the canopies of the trees there right now. So I have a farm, and just because you see forest doesn't mean I have, I don't have a farm. I have a farm, and I plan on having a farm in the front, in the sun, and I, and a farm in the woods. So we're kind of a strange scenario, I'm sure, but my neighbors have beautiful, beautiful forested land as well, but it's rugged and cliffy, just like ours, and we have a snowmobile trail that goes through the entire system, and it's uninterrupted. And one house goes up in there, and it's all shut down. Hunting, snowmobiling, we had kids training cross-country ski in our, on our property. It's, it's a groomed, beautiful trail. I just would hate to see one ounce of this land get cut into by somebody. It'll be all gone, and you can't get it back. And if anyone needs any evidence of wildlife, I have it. I have every, I have video, photos, it's beautiful, and it's prime for development according to the tax map, and it's not. It's, it's rugged and it's not, and even, even if it was prime for development, it's forest, it's the lungs of the city, it should be left alone, it's, and it's far away from the city center. It's not close to the city center. Danville is not, there's, it's not, it's far away, and it used to have a fire department way, way, way back, but it's, it's no longer, so. Just, please, think about everything you're doing. Once you go forward, you can't go back. Once you cut one of these properties, it's gone. Woodbury is a prime example. That was a giant farm, and it was a single old guy, and I remember talking to him, and actually, you know what, one year he wasn't there when we walked by, and then the next year it was a giant sub-development, and all those animals ended up on our property. Every single one of those animals had nowhere to go. And where are they going to go if we start swatching out little patches everywhere? Just please, think, forward-thinking. And if you haven't watched the movie yet, watch Kiss the, Kiss the Ground, it's on Netflix. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Ryan Smith. I live at 14 Weaver Street. I have two documents accompanying my public comment. The first one's the guidance from the state of Maine on LD 2003. I realize the final rules are coming up here soon, but in the guidance that we do have, it does say that it's appropriate for municipalities to take regulatory actions to protect natural resources. So I fully believe that we are above board with protecting our natural resources with zoning. In addition, when you, when you go up to the actual LD 2003 law, on page three, the actual text, it's paragraph 4364A, it talks about allowing four dwelling units on a parcel. It actually says the four dwelling units is only for areas that are designated growth areas in the comprehensive plan. The, the ag zone is, is not a part of our growth area in the comprehensive plan, so that means we could only allow two units if one's not already existing. But I do believe that staff was on to the accessory dwelling unit part where we would probably have to allow those because housing is allowed, but I did want to point that out, that in the ag zone, as it reads now, unless something major comes up with the final rulemaking, we cannot allow four houses on every parcel, or unless we change our comprehensive plan to make the ag zone a designated growth zone, which I would not advise. In addition, I just want to talk about the staff and the time they spent on this. I thought that was a fantastic presentation, but I also want to bring up the survey they did. So I filled out this survey thinking that, you know, the public was going to be heard, and we were going to talk about it, and I haven't heard much conversation about it. So I would just love to have that brought back up, because the staff spent a lot of time putting that together, gathering the results, and I think the results are going to give you a better view of public opinion than anything else you're going to get here within these walls. But that leads me to another point on process. So I guess my question is, where's the public engagement? So we come here and we talk, but historically, this isn't public engagement in Auburn. I mean, maybe for the past year and a half or so, that's been the process, but in, historically, in 2018, 2019, we had a whole consultant we hired, we had an ad hoc committee come together, and they came to the conclusion that more public input should be required for this, and this needs to be dealt with delicately. And that was by an expert consultant that we paid taxpayer money for. And again, staff did attempt that public engagement. My next question is, where's the transparency? Essentially, this document that we have in front of us has had zero public input, and we, we come here and we talk, and we, we reference legal documents, and we, we try to be rational, and we only ask for transparency and more public engagement, but essentially what we have in front of us is something that doesn't follow the comprehensive plan, has zero public engagement and zero transparency on how it originated. So I'm, I'm, again, it's just another cry for more public input and a better process. In addition, we should not be talking about how to grow or grow housing over time in the ag zone or attempting to slow it. We should be talking about how to conserve the land over the long term, and I think that's a key distinction in the conversation. We should be talking about growing agriculture at this planning board meeting, as the comp plan says. So I would love to hear more conversation about how we can conserve land and how we can grow agriculture as our comprehensive plan calls for, and also how we want our ag zone to be, because right now, growing housing in the ag zone is not mentioned anywhere in the comprehensive plan. I believe fully that it, it seems like the concepts we talk about with sprawl are only used when it's convenient. So when I was coming here, I started really in public government and attending meetings when I got a letter about the T. 4.2 zoning in Court Street. All we heard was, "We do not want sprawl," and it was banged up against our heads that we don't want sprawl. And then now here we are, trying to do sprawl. It's quite frustrating. So I think it's time to scrap this, start over again, start the process correctly. This could take a year or more, and we've been trying to do this for 60 years, and there's been no conclusion. We don't have an adequate conclusion right now, and I don't feel like we're on the right track to have an adequate conclusion if we keep building off of what we have so far. Thank you.
My name is Pam Rousseau, 745 West Auburn Road. I know that, I've heard several times here that we are worried about housing, and I know the buzzword, buzzword is housing, but let's be honest with ourselves. If people can afford houses on 10-acre lots, which won't even be able to have city sewer, we will be looking at a quarter of a million dollar for that property. Yay, taxes. But still, the taxes they will pay will not cover the costs of increased services. So what happens is that people that have lots of money come in and buy this second home, and that's not helping our housing. We really do need to go from the core inwards, outwards. So buildable lots will cause higher taxes. Open space, I don't know if you've talked to Karen Skaman lately, but there are more and more people putting their, interested in putting their land into open space, and guess how much land, so that means they are going to be taxed at a much less value. And guess how much money Auburn gets back from the state if land is in the open space? Zero. So you are actually cutting off your nose despite your faces. That is not just you guys, I meant just using it to think. Disrupting trails, I'm part of a snowmobile club, and when a, somebody sells their property and one person doesn't want to have the snowmobile trail go in, then that ruins that whole snowmobile trail. So you are, it just takes one person to say no. When you do this and break up the land, you're breaking up our recreation. And once, if you make it residential, now you can't even use a gun to fire the three, kill one of the 300 deer, you have, just hit them on the road like I did. So, you know, that changes that zoning, too. We, we did 300 deer tags here in Maine, I mean, in Auburn, a lot more in Maine. So we have firearm zoning ordinances that will take effect that aren't there now. So I think there's a lot to think about. Thank you.
Mike Willett, 242 West Auburn Road. I'm here to voice my concerns on the proposed rezoning of the AGRP zone. The city is hell-bent to pass. I understand there is a need for new housing in Auburn, but it seems to me that your approach is more like using a hatchet than a scalpel. This proposal will encourage development of the AG zone with large housing subdivisions broken into 10-acre lots, which would create large development subdivisions similar to the absurd 1,300-unit development proposed at the Sandpil. It would discourage agriculture operations, increase clear-cutting of woodlots, destroy animal habitat, jeopardize our water source and quality. This would change the allure and hinder, not improve, the character of the city. This proposal does not coincide with- This proposal does not coincide with the city's comprehensive plan, negates SNRB recommendations, survey results, and though hard to believe, isn't supported by Auburn Planning Department. By not encouraging growth development for the core out increases the city's services across the board. This will increase the tax on everybody's property when we are being bombarded by increases in fuel, groceries, and the threat of a recession. Residents will be forced to decide whether or not they can afford to continue living in Auburn, have to sell parts of their property just to pay for the increased tax burdens, or heaven forbid, move to a more favorable tax rate area like Poland, Turner, New Gloucester, Minnetonka, and Mechanic Falls. All development that is being considered should be viewed as a case by case. Zoning should not be haphazard. A lofting housing goal set by the mayor involve crazy unhinged development, give any tax incentive financing for overpriced rental units, or force residents to leave the city of exorbitant taxes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter Moore. I'm a landowner on the Pownell Road and the Jordan School Road. Thank you, planning board members, for giving us all this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I stand in support of the proposed zoning text changes, the amendments to the ag zone ordinance. Courage, the moral and intellectual strength to stand for what is right, often in the face of great disagreement. And that's what we're faced with today. 60 years of landowner abuse could be put behind us. We could look forward to a much brighter future and not the quibbling over text changes in an ordinance that has been unfair since its inception. It's time that non-resident landowners in the ag zone have the same rights as existing ag zone residents. We don't need to continue to have two classes of landowners in the same zoning area. And that's really my beef with with the ordinance change. In fact, I think these changes will help to promote the creation of new and innovative businesses and recreational opportunities, both agriculture and recreational in the substantial ag zone landmass that we have. We really haven't done much to encourage that. And in many cases, good land stewardship starts with people living on their land so they can take care of it on a day to day basis and not be commuters to their land. In fact, I think the most active farmers would agree that there are just simply too many times in the course of a year when living on their farm is just as important as being there any other day. But finally, personal income is not a way to decide who lives on their land. It has nothing to do with the use of the land. If you want to govern the use of the land, then have an ordinance that says this is what the land is used for. And if you're going to allow one person to live on their land but not another, then you have an unfair zoning ordinance. And I think all of us that went to school and graduated from high school, probably at least studied a little bit for a few days perhaps, hopefully, the U.S. Constitution, which assures us all of equal treatment under the law and of the law. And this ordinance is a complete violation of that principle. And that's why I've come before you many times to discuss what I believe is a completely unfair, anachronistic ordinance. And it's time that we vote in favor of the proposed text changes and get on with the rest of living in this wonderful city. Thank you.
I'm David Haynes. I have lived at 384 Butler Hill Road for 52 years. I first want to compliment Eric and the staff on the amount of work that must have gone into trying to craft a situation, a solution to what is clearly a complicated situation. I don't want to get into the details. All I want to do is say some history. I knew and worked with many of those who put the current ag zone together. The farmers supported the income requirement and the development restrictions because they wanted to preserve their family legacy and to provide food for all of us. A bigger part of the story, though, was told by the signs as you entered Auburn 50 years ago that said, Auburn, 66 square miles, one of the largest towns in the state. I think allegation may be bigger, but the point is, the creators of the ag zone knew the folly of spreading public services over 66 square miles. And that was their motivation. The farmers were there and they wanted to support them, but sprawl was their concern. Scattering houses over 66 square miles translates directly into higher costs for police and fire protection, school bus service, trash pickup, and more. Who pays for this inefficiency? Every Auburn taxpayer already burdened by one of the highest mill rates in the state. Do we really want to even take even more taxes out of every resident's pocket? Today, we worry about inflation. Service workers, some of whom have had no pay increase in decades, will need to be paid more. Lose the ag zone and you will not only need more service workers, but you will have to pay them more to keep them. And be warned that once you decide to allow houses everywhere, there is no going back. Long after we are all gone, Auburn taxpayers will be saddled with a bad decision today that will cost them forever. Finally, it would be tragic to lose the sense of place, the fields, farms, and forests that define Auburn, that our forbears worked so hard to protect. I'd like to add a comment based on my experience about the assumption that we have a housing shortage. We have a boom right now and we know there is such a thing as a bust. We don't know where it's coming, but I know we're all watching the economy. About 50 years ago, I worked for the city of Lewiston to do a housing vacancy survey. The government was about to provide Lewiston with money for housing. And my job and my team's job was to find out how many vacant apartments and houses there were. It was impossible. Landlords do not want you to know that they have vacancies. They want it to make it sound like, oh, we have a boom. I have not done a survey in Auburn and I'm not going to, but I strongly recommend that you look at some of the parking lots around some of the developments we already have. There are not a lot of cars there. Now, maybe these people don't have cars. But I strongly recommend before you do anything serious that you do a vacancy study if you can, because developers do not want you to know how many places we have available. So I've challenged the assumption that there is a housing shortage in Maine and even in the state of Maine, where surveys have shown at the state level that we have almost one out of every five homes is a second home and is not being resided in. Thank you very much.
Michelle Melorano, 576 Trap Road. I apologize in advance. I'll be reiterating some things that you've previously heard tonight, but I have a few novel points to make as well. Changes to the Agriculture and Resource Protection Zone, as stated in the SEER proposal, do not support the purpose of the zone. They do not support farming. They do not support forestry, natural resources, wildlife, hunting, or recreation. Over these last several years, with the attempts to allow for development in the Agriculture and Resource Protection Zone, they've been actively and strongly opposed by the following list, and this is certainly not a complete list. The Sustainability and Natural Resource Board, the Crossroads Report, the Ad Hoc Committee, the MAGRP Group. Actually, that group was never allowed to put forth their recommendations. The Maine Department of Agriculture and Forestry, Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission, Andres Goguen Valley Soil and Water Conservation District, the Good Food Council. And there are routinely 75% or more folks coming before you at these meetings, providing public comments opposed to these types of changes to the as opposed to those in favor of the changes. These proposed changes do not have the support of and do not align with the 2019 citizen survey, the 2023 citizen survey, the comprehensive plan, as you've heard multiple times tonight, or the recommendations by Auburn's planning staff, who serve Auburn because they have formal city planning education. It's really difficult to understand or try to understand why and how all of these entities, all of these citizens, all of our staff are continually ignored. During this latest process, it appears that planning board and the city council appear to be forging ahead despite overwhelming opposition to these catastrophic changes. As a result, my property taxes will increase yet again. We met with Karen Skamman last week. In an attempt to continue to operate my composting operation on my property, a composting operation, by the way, which is the first of its kind in the country and remains the only one of its kind in the country. All 82 acres of my property is being placed in tree growth and open space, tax reduction programs. It's the only way I know how to protect myself, natural resources, and my property. If I'm not able to do that, I'll be leaving Auburn. I don't have an answer. I have a suggestion. If you all forge ahead with this, again, despite the overwhelming opposition, please, please. For each person who owns property and wants to build their primary residence on their property but has not been allowed to thus far, give them that permission. Let them do so without allowing for them to subdivide. So if they have 10 acres, they get one primary residence on that 10 acres. If they have 1,000 acres, they get one primary residence on that lot. Not 100. If they have 100 acres, they don't get 10 10 acre lots. We hear about affordable housing. There is an affordable housing issue. This does nothing to address that. These lots will not be affordable for pretty much anybody. In the last two months, four properties on Trap Road alone have gone up for sale and sold in a very short amount of time for astronomical prices. Unaffordable prices. Thank you.
Chris Carson, 110 Jakes Road, Auburn. I want to thank you guys for your time. I'll keep it short. I really want to thank Eric and his staff. You guys did a great job. This is one of the best four-page synopses you'll read of the agricultural zone. I was on the mayor's Agricultural and Resource Protection Committee. This is a great report, really well-written, good recommendation. So I think you have some good proposals from the city staff. I think there's another proposal in your packet, sorry, from a group of concerned citizens, which is an interesting proposal. So you have some alternatives. And last thing I'd like to point out is that everybody here keeps asking about cost of community services studies. I'd really love for you guys to think about that. And there's clearly a large group of people in the community that would step up and help out with the cost of community services study. I think we could get Bates College involved. And I think then we'd have numbers, you know? And that's what's really missing in this whole discussion is how do you, you know, what does it really cost? And Eric points out that houses now have less children than they used to. So maybe the numbers have changed in terms of the cost of residential development. But we should get those numbers and do our very best to get real grounded facts so we make informed decisions. And thank you, guys, really very much for your time. I know it's a tough position you're in, so thank you.
How you doing? Ray Nichols, 85 Quail Run, 96 Quail Run, 125 Brighton Hill. Total's about 200 acres. I pay a lot in taxes. I have a couple of questions. Can we bring that map up of the Quail Run area, please? A couple of questions I had is listening to some of the people speak. People do deserve the right to build on their property, but I think it would be much easier to make it as a per request, a permit, hey, I want to develop on my property. Okay, it's, you know, go in and check it, not throughout the whole area. One of the things that Eric and you guys had up was in like the new Auburn area, this that would be allowed for development in the red strips, what if nobody wants to develop that? Are we just rezoning that? If the people that own that land don't want to develop it, then what is all this change time to spend on? I think if people want to develop their property, ask for a permit, have a fee. What is a house permit in the state in the town of Auburn? Like a house permit?
$25.
$25 for a house permit. Is that $25 going to restrict anybody from building a house? I mean, if it's what would another like Lewiston be or I don't know, I don't know these numbers, but I would guess a house permit would have to be 1,200, 1,500, $2,000. You have to commit that you can do what you're going to do, not for $25. What is the city getting out of $25 for each house permit? Doesn't make sense to me. Apply for a permit, 2,000, 3,000, 5,000 per person. Look at the situation, look at the property. I don't want to see 10 houses. If somebody has 40 acres, I don't want to see four houses in four acres. Then somebody can put in a personal road, correct, Eric? Because you said there were going to be no more city roads. Somebody could put in a personal road and put in a small subdivision or cul-de-sac. Sorry. That doesn't make sense to me to do that, but I think on a per basis thing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dennis Wheeler. My family has lived off the Jordan School Road and my mother was related to James Wag, whose name is over there on the building. In my family, we still own some of that 100 acres. And I have been looking to this council to allow me to build a house on a piece of land that my mother gave me on her deathbed and asked me to come home and build a home. I don't know where to stand turn, Eric. I've been to you a few times. I'm just looking someone to tell me that I can build a house, my family, on the land that was given to us in the state of Massachusetts by fighting the Revolutionary War. Thank you. I've spoke to Eric several times and he hasn't been able to help me. He's tried, he's done everything. But I believe one of you people there can help me build a retirement home, my wife and I, on land that's been in my family since it was Massachusetts. Thank you.
How you doing? Rudy Wing, 499 Pendley Corner Road, Auburn, Maine. The property I own is a very historical piece of property in this community, built in the early 1800s. It was here before Lewiston, Auburn was incorporated. My boundaries are pin to pin to pin. And everything I have on my boundaries, my well is five feet off the pins. And my septic tank, which was approved in '04, is on the other boundary of the property. They got approved for the church to have a conforming septic system so they could provide that to their folks that came to worship. I bought it in fire condition. I came here in '04 from Allen Ave over here. I came up here and did real estate management, worked in the low-income housing area. And then I ended up selling that home. It was my first VA loan. And I purchased that church with the intention to bring it back to And I purchased that church with the intention to bring it back to the community for it to serve the community again. Meaning, it was in fire condition. I'm not a pastor, although they call me Reverend Rudy. But my hopes are to, to, to do a lot of things there, to provide. I'm a, I'm a veteran, active veteran, homeless veteran, because I want to be on my lot. I want to be there. I'm trying to provide good ideas for my homeless vets and my other veterans that I cross paths with every day. I have a wonderful agricultural plan for the property, but I have to relinquish all those dreams and those thoughts to be able to think that I can just basically put a roof over my head. If I have to go that route, I'd like to. But I'd really like to be able to do what I've been inspired to do throughout my life and everything that I have learned. There's a lot of great veterans in this community that can use a hand up, not a handout. There's avenues for veterans to get quality programs in the state of Maine. But very few with the understanding that, that they can come and get the answers and the directions that they need, knowing the services, how to, how to maintain the VA Togas Hospital, how to get around that maze up there, what your benefits are to you. I'm currently living in a homeless shelter in the state of Maine, the only one, which I'm saddened to say, because there should be one in every county. But there's thirty other, forty other vets in this place with me, and they all have a, a concept of, you know, I'm lost. I'm trying to figure it out. I'm trying to get a hands up. So what I'm trying to do is provide a service over at my place from across the street from your four-and-a-half-star, top-twenty public golf course called Fox Ridge Golf Course in Auburn, Maine. It is your little gym. And my hopes are to be able to utilize my facility, no matter if I'm living there in a house, in a house condition, or if I'm in my program condition. One way or any, one way I'd like to go is the program condition, because this property has been here for two-hundred, almost two-hundred years. And my intentions are to leave it to the community. Under a board of directors, under a situation where veterans can come get veteran on veteran services, veteran for veterans, where we provide them the guidance that they can get into agricultural programs and different things that they can do if they want to get into it. Aqua farming's a wonderful, wonderful way to farm. It's the new up-and-coming way of doing things. Thirty by ninety can provide a very handsome payday for a veteran sitting in a wheelchair if he has land on one acre. So it can be done. I've, I've got the bids. I've got it all in front of me. The problem is it's quarter of a million dollars to get set up for that, that aqua farming program. So my hopes are that, I, I like all the conversation. Thank you, everybody, for coming out today for this, because it needs to be said. We need to have simple, common sense plans. I was here for the last meeting and I said, everybody that comes up here has their individual situation. Their individual situation, you could be changing their lives just by allowing them to get on that one-acre lot. Now, when I first bought my property, I paid a thousand dollars a year, every year in taxes. And then when I lost it in the fire, I got told it got turned back to a non-conforming law, which you just took my forty thousand dollar investment away, and I can't do anything with this law. But it's in our history books. It's in the library. And alls I'm asking to do is to help my veterans and help my at-risk community and help my community. So I'm hoping that you guys sit here and put a lot of common sense to every individual situation. If you've got sixty-five lots ready to go, pass that. Let's do it. I'm on it. So, all good, all good. I like what you're doing. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your work. But a lot of good be, could be happening if everybody was just individualized and you could put this staff on it, because they can make the calls so that we can get on our property.
Thank you.
Good evening. Phew. It's been a long haul. My name is Kathy Shaw. I own and operate Valley View Farm in Auburn. I'm also a state representative. I'm here tonight to talk about the gratitude. We've heard courage. It takes courage to get up here and say, I have a different opinion than the majority. But it also, for my part, I have gratitude. Because in the past year, we have met more neighbors, more good friends. We've had the opportunity to stand and talk in front of you folks, get to know our Planning Board members, Auburn staff, better than we ever had before. And it's because of these conversations that I'm grateful to you folks, but also all of my neighbors in Auburn, all over Auburn, that care about what's happening, not only in the Natural Resource Agricultural Protection Zone, but over all of Auburn. So, enough being said with me, tonight I'm going to read a letter to you that a neighbor of mine sent. He's not a public-facing man. He prefers to be quiet. But what he talks about tonight is different than what we've heard so far. And his name is Dave Moreau. And Dave says, "I am sharing this from the viewpoint of an organic farmer and a hundred-acre forest owner of thirty-five years in Auburn." This writing talks about the city of Auburn's quest to change the AGRP zone and how that change will affect greenhouse gas emissions, global warming, and climate change. Most of the global warming since nineteen fifty has been caused by human emissions of greenhouse gases. And greenhouse gases come from just about all human activities, including the top two, burning fossil fuels for heat and energy and transportation. Some of the other top producers are manufacturing, fertilizing crops, clearing forests, storing waste in landfills. The trace of greenhouse gases produced by human activities are known as carbon footprint. The environmental indicator measures both direct and indirect emissions of compounds with the most abundant and most important contributor to global warming since nineteen ninety, carbon dioxide. Now, what do forests have to do with global warming? A typical acre of mixed woods in Maine, if left to grow without harvest, will absorb four tons of CO2 per year. So if left to grow without harvest, ten acres average in Maine would sequester forty tons of CO2 a year. According to the United Nations, their far carbon footprint calculator, a typical family in Maine produces forty-five to fifty-two tons of CO2 a year. If we take that ten-acre example and apply it to the zoning change that some folks wish to make, any clearing of forest land will increase the city's carbon footprint and add to global warming and climate change. A zoning change will also create sprawl, which creates longer drives, which would also add to Auburn's carbon footprint. Dave also goes on to reference the Comprehensive Plan and the Auburn's Code of Ordinances, neither of which I'm going to talk about here. Yep, thank you very much, because it has been discussed at length. I appreciate your time. Dave appreciates your time. And I know every other single person in this room is internally grateful for the opportunity to talk and listen. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'd like to seek a motion to close the public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Public comment is closed. I'd now like to start with members of the board that can maybe respond to some of the questions or comments delivered by public comment and even back to staff or something like that. And then really get into the deliberation after that.
One question that was raised that wasn't explicit is where does this come from? Because it was not transparent. I was under the impression we had already answered that. I was quite clear when I brought it up that I sat down, looked at the surveys, which all said that we should be protecting resources. I was on the Planning Board the last time we discussed this. And I looked at the deliberations we had had so far. And I did my level best as an individual to write this language, or the original version of the language, in my living room. Okay, so the, I, I guess so. I'd like to address that, because this has already been addressed. While I'm on it, I, I will say, I, it's somewhat disheartening to me to hear it referred to as the Sears proposal, because, quite frankly, it was just a rough draft of language for deliberation by the board and not meant to be a final say, but rather a, a starting point. So, but anyway, that's a question that has gotten brought up every time we've discussed this set of language so far, which is where did it come from? And me, that's why people keep naming it after me, even though I'd prefer they didn't.
We also had a council and Planning Board joint meeting that changed a lot of it as well. So it's not just Mr. Sears' amendment.
I guess one of the questions that came up, I get not really, there weren't too many questions this time. But was addressed, addressed by staff, the idea that it does not tie directly into the language in the comp plan that says residences should be accessory to an agricultural or natural resource use. So I'm saying, we're still saying this is correct, right? Yeah, I guess a question that, people brought that up. I assume that's a question they want.
No.
I have a couple of questions for staff. So during public comment, the idea of the spaghetti lot came up a couple of times. And it states that the language in front of us would allow for these new spaghetti lots. The language that we're looking, the changes that we would be, that we're looking at right now, did those somehow change the previous ordinance to allow for those spaghetti lots?
No, I, I think that's a good point. I think the motivation to maximize the number of lots that you can create increases with the proposed changes. But you could create those today under the current ag ordinance. But they wouldn't be conducive to most of the rural land uses like farming that the zone allows for. But they would be appealing to somebody trying to maximize the value of their land for houses along the road, was all that staff was saying.
So that's something that is actually left exactly the same way?
You, you could build, you could do that now.
Yep.
But the lot shape wouldn't be conducive to most of the permitted uses.
Did the, the language that we're looking at change the rules? The current rules that you need to have frontage and the term that is used actually requires that it be a public way, not a private way. So the language that we're looking at, I heard a lot of concern about building these internal subdivisions. Did that get changed in the proposed language, or is that still left the same?
No, we're, we're suggesting that maybe we wouldn't want to allow for new public roads outside of growth areas so that new frontage couldn't be created if, if the decision is to, to sort of spread the house lots over the entirety of the ag zone.
I guess I'm saying that was left in the language as well. So lot, the, the dimensions that were previously allowed, left in the language. The density stayed the same. The idea that it had to be on a public road, road frontage stayed the same. I think there are questions in the room tonight from the public about how many more houses possibly could be built under the proposed language versus the current language. If the proposed language maintains the same requirement that, for road frontage on a public way, maintains the same dimensions for lots and the same density, does the proposed language actually create more opportunity, more ability to build homes than we have now?
It, it's not more parcels than you could create now. The uses are expanded, though, I think is the difference, so that a single-family home could be the principal use. But it doesn't, it doesn't create in and of itself more parcels or more opportunity. I think what, what has to be met today is that every ten-acre house lot needs to be connected to agriculture. But it doesn't create more lots than what could be created today.
Okay. I just think that that's important to understand. The residents that could be built today, those individuals that have to demonstrate thirty percent of the household income or thirty percent of the local median income is coming from agriculture. I asked this earlier, so they, except for the front setback and the side setback and the rear setback, would they be allowed to clearcut their property in order to put the house there? Assuming they follow state laws for logging procedures?
Yeah, or for the farm. You could remove trees for a farm. You could remove them for any permitted use.
Is there any restriction on not building on prime soils or soils of statewide significance currently?
No, but the home has to be accessory to an agricultural use.
Is there any prohibition on them citing their home within an area identified by inland fisheries and wildlife as a critical habitat?
Yes, potentially, if it's an area that's protected by shoreline zoning or the Natural Resource Protection Act. But it depends. And I wouldn't say every area that has, you know, significant wildlife habitat is mapped as that.
So we're talking about shoreline zoning and endangered species, but not the additional habitats that are mapped by inland fisheries and wildlife as important habitats?
We're talking about some of those as well. Inland waiting, word, or inland waiting and waterfowl, deer wintering areas, those habitats that are mapped by IFNW.
Could someone create currently discontinuity of the land by placing their home as far back on their property as they wish?
In the agricultural zone?
Yes.
Yeah, if they were farming and they met the income standard. I think it really limits the number of those, but they could still do that.
Okay. I ask these questions in front of everyone, because as I'm listening, it is striking me that the idea of removing the income standard is not new. We've been counseled to do so by legal counsel. In fact, we were counseled to do so in the nineties. I have the, the letter in front of me. It was made available online through a portal created by private citizens on this very topic. If you haven't gone and checked out that, that website, you should do it. I assume, if Kathy is still, still here, she will know and can tell you the specific name after. But it was a wonderful resource, wonderful resources there. The idea that we should be removing the income standard is not new. They tried doing it in the mid-eighties. They did so incorrectly by trying to rezone by changing the zone itself from ag to low-density country residential and rural residential, which was inconsistent with the comp plan. They didn't make changes to the ag zone itself. They rezoned the land that was deemed incongruent with the comp plan. We have a letter from council in the mid-nineties. We have a letter from council in the mid 90s. I was on the planning board the last time we discussed the agricultural zone. The crossroad study indicated that consultant that was referenced determined that the income standard should be removed if we are able to put in place protections. The SNRB was referenced tonight, the Sustainability Natural Resources Board was referenced. Their recommendation was quite clear that the income standard should be removed when sufficient protections could be provided and what are those protections? The protections are on the natural resources within the zone, protecting the resources identified as important in the zone, that is the intent of the zone. Our current zone does not protect important soils. Our current zone has no specific protections for forested land. Our current zone has no specific protections for maintaining continuity at the rear of lots and making sure that someone is not placing their home as far back on their lot as they possibly can and cutting the front acreage, creating a disconnect between lots. Our current zoning tries to do all of that by having an income standard. That's how it does it, but the problem is people can meet the income standard. We don't see people doing this. Ostensibly, that would tell us that this is a hard standard to meet, but here's the reality. When people want to game something, they game it. And it's only a matter of time before people are going to figure out how to meet this standard and they are going to do so and they are going to build with zero protections in place to actually protect the zone that we're trying to protect. I think that is immoral. I will stop talking in a moment. I will say however, I do think we heard something very important tonight. And I can tell you, it was something that was in my original, I sent one draft of this language to staff in January and one of the things that I had in there was a requirement that landowners be enrolled in the state, either the state tax programs for forestry, farming or open space, or that they have a conservation easement. And when I looked into those, I decided that those were very poor metrics and that it was not in Auburn's best interest to utilize a state standard that could change whenever the state wanted to, that we should have our own rules. My first draft intended to meet the comp plan. I agree, this current draft doesn't do that. But I think within the proposal that was given to us tonight, the alternative proposal, there is an option that we can marry into the language we've already been looking at, which is that the residence needs to be accessory to an allowed use. We've determined that those allowed uses are agriculture and natural resource uses. Otherwise, why would they be allowed in that zone, right? We've already determined as a city that those uses meet that. And so I think that we could change the language to state that the residence needs to be accessory to one of those uses, that there needs to be a plan that is approved. I don't think it should be a special exception as proposed by the student group, I mean, I'm a teacher, so it's the end of the day, by the resident group, because I think there's a misnomer. People think a special exception means that it's, it's an exception, you're not allowed to use it. A special exception is a use by right. That means that if someone comes in and they check their boxes, they can utilize that use by right. To me, it would seem an inordinate waste of resources to make people come here and cause whatever tax burden we are causing right now every time someone wants to do this, rather than allow staff who are professionals, land use professionals, to review the plans. And I know I talked at you guys a lot, I will step back and be quiet for a while.
I've got a couple of thoughts, if that's, if that's all right. I think that if we look at the motion that we passed the other month, we said that we recommend not to remove the income standard until we come up with a reasonable alternative. I think that this is a great recommendation, but because of its conflicts with the comp plan, it doesn't, it becomes an unreasonable alternative. So I, and if we go farther back to what we were asked by city council, whether to eliminate the income standard, the Agricultural Resource Protection zoning district and the current strip zoning limitations. That was brought up, that was brought to the forefront of our agenda because of the state regulation, LD 2003. Now, I was aware that the four units per parcel only applied to designated areas for growth, which the agricultural zone is not, so it would not apply to that. Is that correct Eric, or did you, staff?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, as well as public sewer and water.
And what I wasn't, what Mr. Smith and the public brought up was I was not aware that, that there was language saying appropriate, it was appropriate for municipalities to protect the land, protect local resources with zoning, which would mean furthermore that the income standard, which I'm not saying is perfect and has been discussed at length here, is not in conflict with LD 2003 in the ag zone.
The income standard does not protect resources, it limits.
Hold on, let me finish this up. I agree, I'm not, I think the income standard does need to be replaced. I don't think that's what we're being asked to do right here.
I don't think it represents a protection under LD 2003 because it's not men, it's not zoning with respect to management of resources. It's zoning with respect to limiting based on an income and those are two different things.
But also, since it's not an area designated for growth, then this whole four units per parcel wouldn't even affect the ag zone.
It's still two units per parcel under LD 2003.
So that would just be an additional home per every lot in the ag zone, at the worst. What I'm, what I'm saying is, I think what we should, my, in my opinion, what we should do tonight, or what I would recommend, is that we don't eliminate the income standard tonight or the strip zones, that we say we vote no on that, but that we do schedule more public workshops. I think that because of those protections, our LD 2003 language that I just mentioned, I think that the urgency is, has been reduced as far as the timeline of that passing and the final rulemaking just coming, just coming clear to us. So I think it would allow us more time to schedule workshops, more public workshops to find an appropriate alternative, because I do think the income standard needs to be replaced. I just don't think that this accomplishes the same things.
We have time, but you'll still allow those two homes with zero protections as to where they get put.
I feel like the amount of people that would take advantage of that in the span of eight months where we could have four workshops would be pretty minimal compared to what we could come up with for an alternative over that span of time.
Then the assumption would be the p, number of people that would take advantage of whatever we do now is very small. I don't understand why we would not choose.
Because I, well, my, my point is that I don't think it's a reasonable alternative. What we voted for was, quick quote, "Planning board is recommending that we not remove the income standard until such time as there's a reasonable alternative." What I'm saying is because this.
Do you think the language that was presented to us by the citizen group requiring that the home, the residence be accessory with an approved plan to one of the allowed uses in the zone is not sufficient?
I don't know that it's not sufficient. I just don't know that it would be as effective as leaving what we have in place until we come up with a even more thorough approach to just the income standard section of it. Because what the staff's recommendation here is we come up with new growth zones and we change the comp plan, I don't think that's.
I'm going to be mean to staff right now. I think looking at where things are placed on there, it is, I get the sense that part of the reason staff's proposal is written the way it is, is because they don't want to see any development in a particular area, that being the area near the turnpike, because any homes there might negatively impact, that's the wrong way to say it. Any residential development right there has the possibility of putting in new roads for the turnpike, putting in a new turnpike exit, increasing density there harder. I get the sense that this is really a landbaking issue with regard to what staff is proposing and I'm just going to go back to the fact that I think our, our current zoning just does a really bad job at what it's supposed to do because it relies on that income standard.
I don't disagree. Again, I want to repeat that, I don't think, I'm not sticking up for the income standard here, I think it needs to be changed. I just think what we were asked by city council was whether to eliminate it or not. We voted seven, nothing to not eliminate until there's such a reasonable alternative and I don't think this reaches the standard of reasonable alternative. That's my opinion.
I have a lot to say, but as usual, I keep hearing more and more information and get twisted up. The public, I think, gave us a lot of new ideas this evening and I do definitely appreciate that. I, I am more inclined to go the way that, that staff has presented, but at the same time, we need to make changes to the agricultural zone and protect it some more. I don't think that the text amendment is the way to do it currently, because I think it encourages one use of the land and I don't hear the public asking for that. That agricultural zone and, and consistent with the comp plan is to remain agricultural based. I do wish, it also says in the comp plan though, to open it up to other types of uses, but remain consistent with the open space. I'm not quoting, I'm just interpreting it what it is. Like other commercial uses, but are consistent with, there is a great word in here. Anyway, with how it's already, the general look of and feel of what it already is. And, but allowing landowners to make some decisions on, with ideas that we can't even think of here. I've heard a few tonight and I appreciate that, but I know there's a lot more out there. I think this encourages more residential housing in areas that we don't, as a community, want it to happen and certainly with increasing the cost of servicing these residences. But rather the staff encouraging the development to be closer to the urban area, which is consistent with the survey that went out and pretty much everything I've been hearing from the public comment over this, what is this, almost eight months now that we've had public hearings on this? So I, I'm not in favor of this type of amendment, text amendment tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
I think that this combination of the protecting individual resources, concentrating the house location on a parcel, those are all, as Mr. Sears said, those are all protections that don't exist right now.
Yep.
I think the only thing missing in this draft really is that connection to agriculture that if we could better define that it is accessory to, you know, an expanded list of uses, but certainly uses that are allowed in the ag zone, really from staff's perspective, it would just be making sure that we have a clear understanding of how we measure that accessory. The income standard is not magic, it's, it's been how we measure accessory, really. So if there's a better way to measure that combined with the resource protections that are in this draft, I think you've found, if we find that, we've found something that nobody else has been able to put together in the last 60 years. That's, that's kind of the one missing piece here is that accessory connection to agriculture, but not just traditional farms, more uses in the zone as the comp plan says, so.
Thanks Eric, I greatly, I have certainly appreciate that. For me, I kind of go back, I guess recently, I had doing all those seven whys, if you will, and just trying to understand sort of where we came from and why we're being asked to do this. And I think that there are two, two components to it, for me at least. One is certainly the need, we've been hearing the need for, for proper, I don't necessarily proper growth, but managed growth in a way that leverages existing city services. So that's the concept that was brought forward and recommended by staff to grow from the inner corridors out where we already have existing services. So that in theory protects the ag zone. We have the, the need on the income side, we've been asked to remove it. I'm, I don't know the why behind that. I'm guessing it was potentially to encourage additional growth. If I, if I'm moving forward with that assumption, I like your recommendation to focus and it's in line with the comp plan. However, I also want to protect, given any potential changes due to state law, things that aren't, but the ag zone that aren't currently in existence. And I guess I'm trying to figure out, do we do multiple things at once or do we tackle one of the issues? Certainly, I like the growth concept, but yet I'm also hearing that why do we have the income, the income standard was, the farmers wanted when it was first put in? And now, you know, I don't necessarily see the, I don't see the value, you know, I don't is, of either having it or not having it. I haven't heard anybody speak to the fact that it's a barrier to farming entry by having it. I certainly have heard a number of residents say that they, they have land in the ag zone they'd like to live on, even though they don't have an actual farm. So I personally would like to find a way to, to build in the protections that, that Mr. Sears has said very clearly are not there, that Eric, you confirmed as well, to remove that standard. And I don't know how we do all those things all at once, but that's kind of where I'm going back to is to, what are we being asked to do and why are we doing it? Certainly from a growth perspective, being properly managed in the areas where we currently have city support is important. Protecting the ag zone and maybe tying it to, you know, removing the income standard but tying it to a purpose, you know, that might be an option as well. I'm just trying to kind of work it through in my head.
I'm going to touch off something Paul said, you know, this is a Pandora's box for everybody. Staff, the volunteers here on the board, things that are brought up by public comment, a lot of really valid stuff. And each point leads to another point that leads to another point that leads to another point. And they're all valid. You know, there's, there's valid argument on both sides of the line here. The seven of us that are here now, and typical nine of us here, you know, it's our job, it's what we've been asked to do as volunteers is to look at things that are presented, compare it to the comp plan, or whatever resources we have and approve or disapprove whatever might come in front of us. whatever might come in front of us. That, whether or not it applies, or agrees to, or is congruent to whatever material we have as a resource. And it's up to us and the planning board to work hand-in-hand with staff. I almost wanna turn the tables. Staff has experience, training, a lot more knowledge than the majority of us on the board outside of Mr. Seer, who's been here since color TV.
Eric's been here longer.
Staff has a lot more experience, a lot more knowledge, a lot more resource available to them. They hear a lot more. They live, they eat, they drink, they breathe this stuff. I would almost ask staff on this occasion, staff present to the board their alternative for the income standard. And we, as the board, rather than the board try to come up with something that makes everybody happy, crosses all the Ts, dots all the Is, staff come forward with something that is going to, in a much broader range, checkmark all those boxes in accordance with state law, federal law, the comp plan, et cetera. And we look at it from a reverse perspective. I'm almost wondering if that's something that we should seriously consider, because staff hears everything from the public that we hear. Staff hears more from the public than we hear when people come to staff saying, "We want to do this," or "We want to do that," or "We don't want to do this," or "We don't want to do that." The only time we hear that is when those people choose to come to a planning board meeting. There's a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience, a lot of training, and the three people sitting in front of us. And there's a big part of me that thinks the answer lies a lot more in them than it does in the nine of us. That's just my thought.
Eric, when, earlier, when you made a comment about adding a piece that might have been missing, was that relative to the joint workshop text amendment, or is that to the city's recommendation with adding some additional language?
So, I, I think when you mentioned that they, these are really, there's two questions kind of being asked. One is where to grow. And then the other one is, how do we get rid of this income standard, but still maintain some connection to agriculture?
Right.
I think that, you know, the draft that you've come up with so far, that recognizes those individual resources on a property that you would wanna avoid, if possible, in citing a home, and this is sort of along the lines of what Tim DeRoche was saying, combined with this accessory status that was suggested by a citizen group leading up to this meeting, if you added those types of a definition to that standard, I think that you'd have something that connects back to agriculture or other uses that are allowed in the zone, that you could work within that language, but also protects those individual resources, and it, it really could replace that, what the income standard has done. I think one of the biggest questions from staff's perspective would be, is that decision made at a staff level? And I think it, it's suggested in this language, I think, that it would be the agricultural committee and the planning board. Maybe it could be one of those or the other, but I think at the beginning, it would be helpful to make sure that we have a public process that makes those decisions, and still we could, until we could better define that a little bit. So, I certainly think that it's a high administrative burden for somebody to build a home, to have to come to the planning board. But we could either, you know, try that initially until we better define it, or if the board wanted to pursue that, we could try to define that in a more detailed way before it goes into effect.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally on board with that. I wanna add from my little oration a few minutes ago, I think it's totally imperative that language be included for those, we've heard scenarios tonight, and that those that want to build their own home, whether it's inherited or purchased, and they just want to build home on that property, not for developmental reasons, not to subdivide it and sell it off, but if somebody wants to build a home where they're currently not able to, for goodness sakes, they should be able to build a home there. I think language needs to be included in whatever revisions we're looking at along that point.
I, my, I agree with you on that, Tim. I, you know, these existing lots, these historical lots, I think, should be, have the opportunity for that, but the folks that do own a, a lot and wanna build something should have that opportunity, but tying this back, I think the citizen group has some nice, some good language that we can start from, you know, in terms of roping it back into, you know, having some type of agricultural use. And, and even those existing lots, you know, it doesn't have to be a lot. It doesn't, you know, it has to be related to open space. Maybe it's to provide access for a trail, or, you know, we really could get creative on that one lot, and I think we should take a look at it, and as Eric said, we could really spend some time through the planning board process to make sure that we hit those notes, we really nail those notes. And I think that'll, this, the spaghetti lot issue for me is a big one. There's something that Eric and I talked about at length. That's concerning for me. I mentioned to the, to the planning board multiple times about sprawl and, and how that would affect services in the, in the community. I know you're hearing this over and over again, and I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but the way that we have the lot laid out right now would be problematic for the city. I, I truly believe that. I truly do. I, I look at the landscape in Maine. My perspective is more global, and sometimes it's not necessarily just Auburn. It's, it's about the state of Maine. And I see those lots, those narrow lots. I see the town of Burnham, for example, along the river, along the Sebastopol River specifically. There were hundreds of these lots that were, were subdivided and created these, you know, not valuable lots, not, no value to recreation, no value to agriculture, no value to open space, and they built small little homes, and really devalued the property, and didn't serve the area well. I just wouldn't want to see something like that happen in, in this community. And I only speak from, from experience, and when I say that, I've seen it. And I just don't want it to happen here. So, if we can get a chance, and I appreciate you saying that, I really do, if we can get a chance to get in here and clean some of that stuff up, I think it's a good opportunity that we do that, and I appreciate that.
So, I'm hearing the spaghetti lot. I just wanna throw it on another perspective. My family's actually from Van Buren, where we see the same thing. We see it because the farms were historically placed along the St. John River, and what happens is you would take your lot and you would split it in half, or if you had three sons, you'd split it in four. But there's no internal river, so you split along the river, or you split along the road on the river, and so you end up with a lot of these long, skinny lots that ended up being farmed. It's my experience up there that it actually prevented the land from being used for anything else, because they were long, skinny, and there was plenty of acreage to run your farm equipment up, but there wasn't enough acreage to split it out for anything else. So, I would just provide that as a juxtaposition.
I don't disagree that people should be able to build on their land if they own land. That's, I think you should have that right. But if we look at per individual case, wouldn't that create sprawl?
It, it would spread the lots over the entirety of the ag zone, but it would limit the num, if you're not allowed to create new lots for that purpose, I guess it would still limit the, the number of lots to some degree, to what exists.
Would that be spot zoning? Would that be, I just feel like someone's gonna say their due process rights are thrown out the window if we go case by case without having very strict, clear criteria that you have to meet, in which case you wouldn't need to go case by case because everyone who meets those criteria would.
Yeah, and staff is asking if there is an alternative to the income standard, that we are clear on what that is, just so it can be applied evenly. What the citizen group suggested had a number of standards, including, you know, going to the planning board and/or an agricultural committee, and confirming that the plan was feasible, that it was a legitimate bona fide agricultural or farm use, and the lot could accommodate it, and...
So, I have a question about that. Is there a way for that process to happen outside of the special exception, that is to say, it's a permitted use? But this plan, as part of the permitted use, must come before the planning board, I ask, because the code enforcement officer now has to look at your income and determine whether or not that's the case. Does it have to be a city staff person, or could that be its own process?
So, it could be its own process, or we could define it well enough that staff could apply it objectively. I think right now, we don't have enough definition to that, to apply it fairly, you know, when different people are making decisions. But yeah, it could be that the farm plan is reviewed by the agricultural committee or the planning board, and then once that farm plan is approved, then staff can do the rest of the review for citing the house and all of those things that are well-defined.
I think it's important to note that, from what I've heard from planning board meetings where this has come up, from what I've been able to extrapolate, is that would be a very minimal number of occurrences. I hear more people, I hear a lot more people already reside on the property or have no interest, you know, we're, we're not talking about subdividing. We're talking about currently owned. Yeah, build on it. But I think that, from what I've heard, that's only been a handful of cases. So, that's, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I mean, we're not looking at forty or fifty or sixty people doing this because of overwhelming voice that I'm hearing is nothing, and a few people are like, "Hey, I, I want to." Well, I think it's their right to be able to build on their land, but I think we also need to keep in mind how big is that number realistically?
The only hard part is, they don't own it forever, so. We just have to keep in mind that maybe I've got a hundred acres and I'm only gonna build one house on it, or I have nine hundred acres and I'm only gonna build one house on it. Maybe I'll do something really nice and create a preserve when I leave, because I choose to live out my entire life on that property. Maybe I give it to the public, or maybe I sell it as part of my retirement income after I subdivide it, right? So, it's, you'd never know, or maybe I'd sell it to someone else and they choose to subdivide it.
But there's already a house there, so we can't build another one.
I think it's hard to, we heard mention about affordable housing, and there's a lack of affordable housing. People going in and building homes and filling up that expectation of having more homes. But what is affordable to everybody in this room is different. So, to put a number, or to put an expectation of what's to be built and what it looks like being built, doesn't necessarily say this person buy or this person can't. I just think it's like making too much of a, not too much, but what's affordable to one person is different for another. So, it's not changing, taking that away.
I think we could keep talking. I would like to hammer out the language tonight. I'm looking at the clock. I think realistically, we have other things that we need to get to, and we need to honor people's time. And I think that it's important for people to be able to see what the final product is that we're looking at. So, I make a motion to table this until the next meeting with the following direction to staff, that staff create options for the planning board to review of final language that incorporates the idea presented in the resident version tonight regarding tying residences to uses within the ag zone that would be congruent with the comp plan, and the language that we were previously reviewing that staff had presented for tonight. There we go.
Second.
Just to make sure that that satisfied what we were asked to do tonight.
I think it gives staff the direction to draft sort of a compromised version between the two ideas that incorporates the tie to agriculture, that it doesn't go directly to council, so it's not leaving here, going straight to council, but it gives us a chance to advertise for a public hearing, a combined version that you could, I think, June 6th is the night that we're asking you to potentially reschedule the June meeting for because of the election on the 13th.
Yeah, that was that email, right? A week earlier?
Yes.
We already missed the deadline anyway, so.
Late is late.
And I think you're, you're a lot closer than we have been.
Absolutely.
Like I said, I think part of the missing key the whole time is having staff a whole lot more involved than just the planning board, really.
All those in favor? Thank you. What number are we on? Okay. Number five. No. We're gonna take a three-minute break. Thank you. Not voting on that. We're just doing it.
Do you just eat antipode? Well, I don't understand where it went. You don't need it? I don't. No, what happened? It's here. Now that I think of it, I did actually play. It's right here somewhere. It's not surfacing. Thank you. I got two now. Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna get the meeting back in order. We're moving on to agenda item four. This is a public hearing slash special exception slash site plan review for the John F. Murphy Homes Incorporated. They're proposing an eight-bed care, care home, sorry, located off Hotel Road, parcel ID 237-070-001. The proposal is pursuant to Chapter 60, Division 5, Suburban Residence District, Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2, Site Plan Review, Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 3, Special Exception, and Chapter 60, Article 12, Division 5, Shoreland Overlay District.
So, we, at the last meeting, we heard this item on April 11th, and it was tabled to address a few concerns from the public. And so, we're back here today with a little bit more information regarding the, a changed buffer proposal for the Taylor Brook House. And so, a slight planning, or slight plan change that I can bring up. And so, today, this public hearing, we can either, we can just open the public hearing to review this, to review the new buffer information, or we can open it to talk about the project as a whole. That can be up to, up to the board, but I'm gonna just pull up.
The board would appreciate it if it was limited to the buffering and the lighting.
Yes, we can, we can do that. So. Okay, so the additional information given on May, or for this meeting is we have the new information that, from other similar developments, that the economic value study of eight surrounding properties in the Summer Street neighborhood from 2018 to 2023 found an average of 23% increase of property value, which is equal to about $31,000, or $30,100, $31,100 per home, sorry. Second piece of additional information is that an additional buffer was added to include a six-foot-tall privacy fence along the south side of the entranceway. Additional staggered evergreen tree row to block views from the west and the north was also added. A photograph analysis for view shed perspectives, also showing the, so really the existing conditions, existing buffering on the site. Full cutoff lights were added, so that's to help with the, with the lighting concerns. And under Site Plan Review, Section 60-1277, subsection 1, gives the board the authority to request an additional buffer to protect against artificial and reflected light, sight, sound, dust, and vibration. In addition, the Section 30-1301, subsection 17, requires submission for buffering from neighbors as well as Section 60-607, subsection 10, under these standards, the above standard, and the above standards, staff finds via that the information above provided, that was provided consistent with meeting the buffering requirements. So, I'm gonna bring this up. Okay. So, this is an updated buffer plan. Can see, okay, so here is the, so here are the new like double, double-tiered row of trees to buffer the front. I'm trying to find, oh, here's a new six-foot-tall cedar stockade fence, runs from, along the property line, surrounding the parking lot. New six-inch loam and seed emulsed to disturbed areas unless otherwise noted. So, there's erosion control mesh on all slopes. They have submitted permits to MDEP, Army Corps of Engineers, and have also submitted permit by rule application, which all the review time period has passed, and they have not received comments from, from the state staff who review those items for the, for the minimum wetland impacts that are happening here. Let's see.
Can you just explain for everyone who heard what you said, who may not understand what that means?
Oh, yes, yes. So.
That if they haven't heard back, that means that?
Yeah, so that means that, that means that's a good thing. Like, when you haven't heard, when we haven't, when we don't receive comment from, from the state authority, that means, no comment is basically that it is passed. If there is comment, or they give direction, or they impose requirements, that means that the applicant has to follow those. So, what I'm talking about here is for, there was some concern about this project falling into some of the resource protection area. And we see on the map that it's, that the short, that the resource protection area and the, and the wading bird habitat area, it follows the same line, or the, yeah, the shoreline zone, the wading bird habitat. So, besides the city evaluating this, if, if these areas are impacted, the applicant also needs to submit an application for permit approval, in this case to the NRPA. They've also submitted to Army Corps of Engineers, even though I don't think the, the scale of this actually required that, but it was a notification anyway, and Maine Department of Environmental Protection. The waiting period for those have gone by. They are expecting permits from those entities soon. They have not received comment about it being, about needing it to change.
Yeah, and if I could, could just add, for the Natural Resource Protection Act permit, they were allowed to impact up to 20% of the area that's mapped as the buffer around the wading bird habitat. They've impacted about 4% of it, and a permit by rule, if they don't provide feedback in 14 days, is, is considered approved.
I, I just want to interject real quick. I know last meeting this came up, I was really poo-poo on the whole idea. And after seeing these different aerial views from mainland development, it's been very helpful in me being able to distinguish exactly where this is and the impact it has on the vegetation. Thank you for this updated photos. A lot easier than the blueprint schematics.
And you can certainly ask the applicant questions. You do have one piece of public comment in your packet regarding the resource protection zone, wading bird habitat as well, just to document that, that was given to you. We received it this morning.
I did have a question with regard to that. So, the planning board generally looks at those and states, if you can get, if you are getting your approval from the federal government or whoever the oversight authority is, then you've met that, that standard. Yeah?
Yeah, in this case, we have the shoreline zoning requirements that the mapping mirrors the state mapping. It's exactly the same. The state allows you to impact 20% of that habitat on the property. The city allows approval of this type of use within the resource protection through the special exception process. So, they're, they're the same areas that are protected. They're protected under kind of two standards. One is the local, one required by shoreline, and one is the Natural Resource Protection Act. But they've done their best to minimize the impacts within that. Any movement away from that resource would, instead of impacting upland area that's close to a wetland, it would actually impact wetland. So, I think they've done everything they can to avoid and minimize those. And if the project meets the special exception criteria, that's the same standard required for approving it.
And I had a question about the buffering, but I'm assuming that's probably best left for the applicant. My question being, and I'll say now that you compare, we had discussed evergreens, so I'm seeing the evergreens in the front. I think that this was a creative solution. We had talked about evergreens along the road possibly, but it appears that, you know, in looking at the site, this has less impact on the site itself. It looks like if they had gone by the road, they would have actually impacted some wetlands. So, I appreciate that the applicant managed to find a way to screen the front in a way that we had discussed without impacting that wetland area of the front. My question for the applicant when they get up will simply be, why the fence along the southern line as opposed to a vegetative buffer? So, just so they can, they know that that's gonna be a question.
Yeah, so I think we talked a little bit about this already. We, if you, if you look on a different profile, the, actually the grading plan, there's a ditch there. So, obviously, we can't put trees in the ditch. So, that, we looked, we looked carefully at the language for a buffer, and there was, there was some clear language in there that said that utilizing either trees or fence met that buffer requirement to block that light. So, we, we thought that was really the best approach there. We didn't want to be in the business of planting nice trees and having them die with wet feet. So, that was kind of a, the, where we landed there. And.
Are you talking along the boundary with the farmhouse, the white house? That's what I'm talking about?
Yeah, this one right here.
Yeah.
So, it's, this, this is the ditch along here.
Yeah, I'm looking at the grading plan now. I see there's a culvert and everything.
Yeah. So, and then, just to kind of take a step back, Evan, to your comment earlier about, you know, we would typically put the NRPA permit by rule as a condition of the approval. Because it had elapsed that time, same thing with the comments back from Army Corps, we did not include that as a condition. If it was still hanging out there, we would have recommended it as a condition of the approval to the planning, to the planning board. That's our typical SOP on that. So, that's the reason why we left that out.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask because it's usually in there, and I just want everyone to understand maybe why it was okay, because they've already received that approval.
I think it would be helpful for you to hear from the applicant as well, but the, the fence was the preference of the homeowner next door as well, over trees being planted right along the property line.
Homeowner as in farmhouse or condos?
The farmhouse.
Is that it for staff? Are there any more questions? So, does the developer have anything to add to what staff has spoken about?
I think staff has covered it. We're prepared to do a full presentation if you want us to, but at the late hour, it's up to you. I, I thought I heard you, only wanted to answer the questions that you had. So, we'll answer any questions you have.
Are you guys okay with just what we've heard so far? I think we heard a lot.
I think our biggest concern last month was the buffering and I feel, and the lighting, and I feel like that's been changed by the applicant.
Oh, actually, while you're there, Mike, it was discussed the idea of turning off the lights on the access road at least minimum, perhaps all the lights on the parking lot off at nine o'clock. I don't see that addressed in what came before us.
We, we did not because we were afraid about the safety of the staff during shift changes. So, we didn't, we didn't put that in. Certainly, if you wanted it as a condition, we will likely be turning the lights off after shift change, more likely 10:30-ish because there's a nine o'clock shift change, and it takes time for some of those folks to leave. And then, we would also turn them on at 5:00 AM in the morning for the shift change in the morning at 6:00.
And I apologize, it may not be in here, but is there an updated lighting map based on the cutoffs?
There is an updated lighting map in the, in the supplemental. There is zero at the property line in all cases.
What's your estimated timeframe if this was approved from groundbreaking to completion?
I think we're looking at anywhere from seven to 12 months, depending on materials and supplies. They had a problem with the lighting program the last time, that it would not account for the shield, and we gave you a picture of a shield that goes around three sides of this light, so it's lighting only towards the parking lot and the other things right there, that shield. It's a little hard to see on the sketch, but there's a little shield that hangs down from the bottom of that light.
And I apologize, Mike, I was looking for it, and it was in a, just a little different section, so.
We gave you a lot more information, but we wanted to make sure we had everything in the folder you needed.
Between this and the, the information.
Between this and the, the information we received, the initial time, I, I don't think you need to do a full presentation. We got a whole bunch.
Any further questions for the developer? Okay. I'd like to seek a motion to open the public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? And before we start, I, we would appreciate it if the public could try to limit their comments to the lighting and buffering, as that's the, what the board is going to be discussing in our deliberations.
My name is Mary Booth, and I live at 32 Lipidolite Court, which is one of those condos that you can see from Hotel Road, and I'll look right down on this. I was wondering if you could go to the buffer plan, because I didn't... So the area I'm concerned about, like this is what I'm going to be looking out at. And so are these the new trees, and these new trees, what are those? I don't see big buffers there compared to what's there here. So I don't see, are these existing?
Those are existing, yes.
So there's no plans at all to put anything in the picture. So we're going to be looking out at the parking lot, and we're going to be looking out at the dumpster. So putting the trees here, the buffers here didn't really do us much good. Which are three condos paying quite a bit of taxes. So I'm concerned about that. I don't understand why parts of it were buffered and other parts weren't. Because we have no, our sightline is directly there. If you drive by there, you can see there's no, any amount of trees that are really going to affect, or hide that from us. So it's no different, I understand it's a single-family residential as far as the law is concerned, but as, as far as I'm concerned, we all know that single-family residential houses don't have 19-car parking lots and commercial dumpsters. And that's what I'm going to be looking out at. Doesn't matter to me whether it's a residential home, or John F. Murphy, or if it's, you know, some other commercial. The end result is, I'm looking out at a parking lot, and there was no, no buffering done at all in the parts that are going to affect us at Granite Mills Estate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate all the work that you do. My name is Ed Carmier, and I live at 57 Aquamarine Court at Granite Mills, and I'm the president of the Granite Mill Condo Association, which represents 73 owners of one single property. Granite Mills GME supports the mission and goals of John F. Murphy. We really do. They, they do a great job providing a vital service. But we do have concerns about this project, and we're seeing some information today for the first time. So some of this stuff may not be appropriate. But what we feel is this is a good, good project, but it's on the wrong lot. And let me tell you why. First of all, notice should have been sent to all GME owners, because you just sent it to a few people that boarded the property. But we all boarded the property, because it's one piece of property with 73 owners. I just learned about this thing like two weeks ago, and didn't, I haven't had a chance to review this thing. The water table is very high in this area, including GME and the abutting property. This area also includes significant amounts of acres of wetlands. After reviewing the submittal to the planning board, it is clear that there is stormwater treatment, but it's not clear that the runoff will be the same or less than present. Any construction will have a negative impact and will directly affect GME. We are concerned about the groundwater, and the stormwater will impact a negative way now and in the future. We have experienced recent groundwater infiltration problems in basements along Rubelite, which required costly repairs. Regarding property values, a recent purchaser said if she'd known about this project, she would have offered less money and may not have bought. There will be a profound impact on local wildlife, and some has been said about that, but it will deeply affect deer, birds, foxes, beaver, fish, woodchucks, and countless other wildlife around Taylor Brook. We are concerned about the stormwater runoff from the outfall from Filter Pond 1, which is only 65 feet from the GME property line. There is a grading problem near the garage and generator, which allows water, stormwater to runoff without being detained either in Filter Pond 1 or Filter Pond 2. We take issue with a statement made by Mainland Development, and they are an excellent engineering firm. I don't mean to put them down. But they quoted, "As shown on the plans and in this application, and, and this application will not alter the characteristics of the neighborhood, and will not result in any creation of any nuisance or unsafe conditions, site or surrounding area. We feel that there are visual, groundwater, and stormwater issues that have a negative impact on our property values." So some questions we have. What contingencies are being made for possible changes in water flow in and around the site, including neighborhood properties? This is a $5 million project for eight beds. That seems awfully expensive. What are the plans for the future? Will a zoning change be requested to add more beds? If so, that would only exacerbate the negative results on stormwater runoff, water table, and wetlands. How is the proposed project going to address the negative impact on wildlife? Was there a site selection process to select the best site? What was the result of that process? And one more question. Evan Seer, the board member and teacher, what's the connection between the Evan Seer, the Realtor, if any?
None.
Thank you.
He is Evan P. Seer from Lewiston. His mother is Jane, and she is a Realtor. My mother's name is Claudette. She's from Van Buren, Maine. I am an Evan G. Seer.
Thank you. That makes me feel much better. Thank you for the clarity. As we said, we really don't think this project's to go forward, but it seems like it's really far along. But changes we would offer, provide a buffer of conifer trees, starting at the beginning of Filter Pond 1, and extend to the cul-de-sac near the generator, which is different than what you've shown. We must have that as, as a, as a buffer. Further expansion or additions will not be permitted, nor will any zoning change be implemented. Verify that the stormwater runoff will not exceed present-day runoff amounts. I have not seen that. Correct the grading problem between Filter Pond 1 and Filter Pond 2. Thank you.
Hello, Ryan Smith, 14 Weaver Street. I tried to ask this question to staff in that three-minute break, but we didn't quite resolve it, so I'm going to ask it now. I'm looking at the shoreline zoning ordinance, Section 60-991, and I'm not seeing anywhere permitted or special exception that allows a single-family house in the Shoreland Overlay District. And that's concerning, because then this wouldn't be allowed, and the statue I quoted last month wouldn't be relevant. I do see in special exception, it says principal structures and uses, including driveways. But when you go to our definitions, it says principal use means the principal use for which a lot or main building therefore is designed, arranged, or intended, and for which it may be used, occupied, or maintained. So principal structure does not mean single-family house. So when you come back, it's basically saying, like, for example, agriculture is a special exception. You can have a building related for agriculture, like a hay barn or something, right? But nowhere in our ordinance, and at least that I'm seeing, says that a single-family house is allowed. And I'm, I'm saying this because I just was not able to clarify the exact ordinance references with staff in that break. But I've read this thing 10 times over, and I'm having a really hard time with the interpretation of that. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
My name is Todd Goodwin. I serve as Chief Executive Officer of John F. Murphy Homes, and appreciate the opportunity to stand here tonight. You know, I, I have no capacity to comment on some of the questions around wildlife and stormwater and such design things. I would rely on, on our team to, to comment on that. What I would like to say is that I do understand and recognize, you know, concerns that, that some folks may have. And I would just like to offer up a couple of facts. You know, as an organization, we've been operating and serving some of the neediest people in our community for about 50 years. And it's an obligation we take very, very seriously. And part of that obligation is to be a good neighbor, and to be a good citizen of our community. And that's what we have attempted to do through this process so far. And we will continue to strive to be a good neighbor. And the, I guess the last thing I would just say to a comment I heard around, you know, is there a plan to get in there and develop more? The answer to that is no. This is an intermediate care facility for people with disabilities, and at the risk of boring you with the minutia of our business, this is the highest level of care available to people in this state. These are folks that, were it not for a facility like this, likely would be served out of state, at a tremendous cost to all of us. There are very few of these facilities in the state, and what we're seeking to do here is to put a good foot forward to meet a very real need for a group of people that deserve it. So, thank you for your consideration.
I reside at 11 Ambitus Circle. Just like to say a few things. I spend a lot of time on the trails down along the brook, and I'm seeing more and more water there every year. And I'm quite concerned, not only just for the wildlife, and I'll talk about that a bit, not only for wildlife, but the water table is moving. Right now with this water, we don't have a brook down there. We have a pond. Taylor Pond is down there too, number two, I guess. So we have a lot of water, it's really moving up. In fact, the water is not really draining now. It's just sitting there because it's just spread, there's so much water out on the, on the lake, that it's not moving at all. This is a concern to me, because I think, over the years, we all know that climate is changing. And what was a big storm 50 years ago, is a big storm last year, and maybe another one next year, another one next year. We're getting more, we're getting more rain, we're getting more storms. And I think this is a big consideration, because if you flood this area out anymore, not that there shouldn't be water out there, because there's a lot of wildlife that resides out there and comes through. But I think the water situation, if you don't control this really good, it's going to be worse. And I, I really am concerned about that. Talking about wildlife, you'd be, you'd be surprised on how much there is there, as many as 300 or 400 ducks there off and on through the season. All kinds of wild waterfowl, all kinds of birds, deer, fox. I even saw a pine marten, which I'd never seen anywhere in the main woods in my life down there. They're a very, very wary animal, and we've got a lot of stuff there. Just recently, a forester was down there, and he came up to me, and he said, "I never realized that you'd have a place like this right in the city of Auburn, right in this close." So I'd like to consider the water situation and protecting this area. Thank you.
We didn't do a presentation, which we probably could have answered some of those questions. We can answer them for you if you want us to. We're here, Esther's here from Mainland. You know, stormwater drainage, we can talk about it if the board wants to hear. If you have the paperwork, that's fine. But we can talk about the buffering and what we did with this landscape plan.
Yeah, we'll have to decide that after public comment.
And we'll have a chance to respond to your questions, if you have questions.
The board will make a decision on that after public comment.
I just wanted to say, I am definitely within 500 feet, and I was not notified of this. I found out about it the night before your first meeting about it on Facebook. That's how I found out about this.
Seeing no other members of the public wishing to address the board, I seek a motion to end public comment.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Public comment is closed. Do any of the members of the board wish to answer any questions or make comments about the lighting or the...
I have a question on the tree buffering, if I may. Could you bring up the plan, please? Thank you. Just to, and scroll down just a little bit, so I think this is the area that we're kind of, the issues that we've been, some of the issues that we've been hearing. I want to just clarify, the dark green on the other side of the property line are trees that are not going to be cut, whereas the trees approaching the parking lot that are lighter color are planned to be cut. Thus, just leaving the stockade fence as a buffer, correct? And that, the, the difference between the dark and the light color? And maybe this, I'm happy to, to have this answered, because I'm looking at, I'm looking at the legend of light trees and dark trees, and I'm seeing all of those disappearing.
Yeah, so it's, I feel like it's more difficult to see on the screen and maybe on the reduced-size plans. So the trees that are in the lightest green, which there's one underneath of, say, the riprap at the spillway, there's a couple in the footprint of the filter pond, one kind of right in the corner of the parking, and then one over by the cul-de-sac. I'll go point them, or the drive-through of the garage, I'll go point them out real quick. Those trees there. So all of those trees are proposed to be removed. The darker green trees are all remaining. So the ones that are within what we show as the tree line, so there's some on the other side of our wetland impact area, and that existing wooded area. And then there's trees on the Granite Mills Estate's side of the CMP corridor that will remain as well. As far, yeah. And I can explain more about buffering if you'd like.
So the, the, yeah, if you can scroll down, Catherine? Sorry. The, the little wetland area south, yeah, south of the, the stockade fence that's being proposed, are those staying or going?
Those trees will remain.
Okay.
Yeah.
Catherine? Catherine? Right here. Would you be able to...
Thank you.
This, I think will coincide with what Dave is asking. You have a satellite view in this booklet, and the drawing title is "Location Map With Leaves." It's an actual, like, satellite view that shows tree lines? Yeah, it's one of those, it's got the white outline on it. That's close. Yeah, I think that's it. Is it, no, yes, that one. Is there any way you can expand that? Because I think that would be very helpful for a lot of people to see exactly what is going or leaving or staying. Yes, thank you. So from what I see, yeah, where you can see the condos, excellent. So that white line is the existing tree line as it is today, correct? All right. And then I see there's another one just like that, where there's some minor changes, but what we could, that white line right there facing the condos, that is unchanged from the development. And the white line to the right of the CMP easement, that is unchanged. Yep, going up and then to the right, and then to the left of that. Yep, going up and then to the right, and then to the left of that, that tree line is unchanged. And the only changes I see are where the building is constructed. Yep, right in there, there's a minor change to the tree line there, and a minor change at the parking lot. And the only changes are facing the development. There's no tree line changes external of the development. Is that correct?
It looks that way, yeah.
Thank you. That's made it a lot clearer for me, and I think it might make it a little more clear for the public as well.
It did look like the fence that was put in, that is blocking the parking lot, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the fence was put in because the trees that would be potentially planted could die in the ditch.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Would it be reasonable to request that where trees can be planted in lieu of a fence be done so? And where trees would not survive the fence be? I'm seeing nods from the developer that that would be reasonable or no?
Wasn't there, I thought I remember seeing a request from the farmhouse due to dogs or something that they wanted the stockade fence running down the entryway instead.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions or deliberation needed with the board? Then the next step is I'll need a motion to...
Oh, I actually, before I do that. Last time we had talked about shutting the lights off at nine. We're hearing that there's a concern about safety. I think the safety is primarily in the parking lot. Because once you're in your car on the accessway out, you've got your high beam, I mean, you've got your lights on in the car. I would like, I can, I can manage to stomach at the shift change. But I would want it to be at a shift change to be no later than I want to give a time. And my preference would be that the lights on the accessway are turned off by nine. That, that safety lights in the parking lot be allowed until a shift change. But that we provide a time for that because I don't, right now the shift change might be 10:30, but I think it might be a little jarring to the neighbors if there's a scheduled change and all of a sudden the shift change is now at one. And so these lights are on now until one or two in the morning. So that's my preference with regard to that.
I guess, Evan, I'm, I'm in opposition, I suppose. Having seen the pictures of the lights in the neighborhood, seeing lights, and certainly in my neighborhood, people leaving things on overnight, you know, from sundown to sunup. Safety of people walking, coming in and out of that property. I think that the shields and the downlights make for an effective alternative, and I'm okay with leaving it as it stands.
Is there a middle ground where you just ask that they provide a lighting schedule plan without having to make them, without giving them specifics of it and have them come back to us with it? Like as a condition of approval?
They provide a lighting plan to staff?
A lighting schedule plan to staff.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. Listen, I live in a neighborhood, I got a, I got a streetlight right out my window, right? So I get it, I'm used to it, but...
What are the lights in the neighborhood in the condos? What is their schedule for the lights?
Problem solved. I'll take back my comment, and the full cutoffs are coming straight down, whereas something like a yard light's a 360, so...
I propose the approval of the John F. Murphy Homes Taylor Brook House site plan for the Pro's eight-bed care home located off Hotel Road. Parcel ID 237070001. The proposal is presented to Chapter 60, Division 5, Suburban Resident District. Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2 Site Plan Review. Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 3 Special Exception. And Chapter 60, Article 12, Division 5 Shoreland Overlay District.
Are you including the Condition A?
With Condition A, no development activity until any bonding or inspection fees are determined by the Auburn Engineering Department.
Any consideration for a second condition for lighting schedule to be provided?
With hearing that the neighborhood lights are on all the time, I just don't see the need for a schedule with the shielding that is put into place personally.
I'll second the motion as presented, and then if someone wants to make an amendment, they can do so. The motion has been seconded.
All those in favor? Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
So as it's after nine o'clock, I need staff... Sorry, not, wrong word. The board. Item 6, and we have to have the, we can put that off. We need public comment. The miscellaneous this time is to talk about future items. Is that where you're asking us about whether or not we want something coming forward and...
I think this is the question of whether or not you'll take on something new after nine. But what we're asking for on the general business piece that would be next is just for you to set it up for a public hearing at a future meeting.
Well, I'm saying, on mine, I'm not saying a general business, I'm saying...
A workshop text amendment for proposed amendments GB, GB 2 and ID.
Yeah, that, that's it.
Okay, what item is that? Because there were two agendas, is that the one that's like the bulleted one?
It's item...
It's item five on the agenda.
This is the one that was in our packet.
Yeah, there's a table of contents, and there's an agenda.
Maybe it didn't label table of contents, sorry.
I'm making a, I make a motion to take up items five, seven. How important is eight for staff?
I gave the chair my agenda, I don't know which one eight is.
So eight is, we really need to reschedule the June 13th meeting.
So I make a motion to take up items five, seven, eight, and nine.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, let's continue.
Okay. Thank you. I just, real quick, this is just a workshop under general business. So general business, general business 2, industrial zone. Those have specific density requirements in terms of what the impact of the building could, could impact on the lot. Currently, right now, it's, it's 30%. We're hearing from a lot of, it's in your packet, we've got a note in there from the Economic and Community Development Director, a local business owner looking to expand. And when I mean expand is the building size is, say, 5,000 square feet, they need to go to, say, 10,000 square feet. But they've already met the maximum density requirements for the building size. So what we're asking is to allow 60%, up to 60%. And a question was asked by the Planning Board Chair specifically, well, why don't, we looked at some of the other communities, and some of a lot of the other communities don't have any density requirements. We're suggesting the 60% because that's what, that is what's married in our Form-based code, that's what we use. And it's twice what we have already. So I thought that that was relatively generous. So I thought it could meet the intent of what a lot of the developers are looking at and what the industrial business needs are out there. And I thought that that would, it would be a, you know, we could still have some good parameters on a, on a good-looking lot at 60%, so...
So, before I say I want to move forward, I do have a question because it'll deter my answer. Are we looking at this because one individual business owner came to us? Or are we looking at this because it came up, staff reviewed it, staff determined that this would be a good change to create harmony and consistency within the zoning?
Both. I'm going to say it's both. We did have multiple people come in and say that, look, we, we cannot expand in the city of Auburn, we're going to move out.
So the answer isn't, there's more than one person. I'm saying, we're not doing this for one person. This is something that's been coming up. You guys have reviewed this and said...
Over and over again.
This keeps coming up.
Yep.
We need to review this. This will actually also create harmony and consistency throughout the zoning. Okay.
And I think it has a legacy with our extensive parking requirements that no longer exist for businesses, that it worked because you needed so much parking.
Hence that article you sent in the email a couple of weeks ago.
For reference, some of the new Form-based code building lot requirements are, can, I think, have like 70-plus percent of the lot covered by buildings. And this is, in general business, right now, it's just 30. So it's really, the way it is now, it causes, it acts to really space out businesses. And I don't think that's the direction that the city wants to go in at this point.
So you guys are seeing cause for this, and it makes sense, and it's been requested several times.
That's correct. And the other part of this too is that the city wants to remain competitive. You know, if we're attracting new businesses and good, good businesses that, you know, have industrial-type or manufacturing-type, type businesses, this is really a good opportunity to be competitive across, across the board.
Parking lots are very expensive to build and to maintain. And is definitely a limiting factor on which businesses would decide to come in. You'll also open up the possibilities for complementary businesses on existing sites, for them to build, use that property for something else instead of either open parking lot space or longer-term parking lot space that's being used currently in some of the larger lots.
So I don't know if we'll ultimately agree, but it sounds like it's worth talking about. So I'm assuming that we need to, I mean, not, we need to, we, this needs to be done a particular way, which is we can't just ask them. So I'm going to make a motion that the Planning Board initiate a zoning change process specific to the language presented by staff this evening with regard to the general business, general business 2 and industrial zones.
Second.
All those in favor?
I assume you needed us to do that, right? Like, this didn't come from council yet or anything like that?
Right. I appreciate that.
They haven't suggested motion right there.
Oh, well, I didn't get that far.
Yours was fine.
It was really close, though.
So we're skipping item six and moving on to public comment. Do we get to skip that because there's no one here? Okay. Oh, I need a motion to open public comment, or I can skip it?
You don't, because this one isn't a hearing like this. You, you're actually running this one, it's public comment, you get to, you get to open it and close it. I know Stacy asks, and every time I tell her, you don't need it, but she does it anyway.
So I'm opening public comment. Now I'm closing public comment.
I second that.
And item number eight, we had a couple of miscellaneous things to talk about. One was rescheduling the June 13th meeting due to an obvious conflict with election night. We suggested moving it to June 6th, the week before.
I think we already have, we've gotten a little poll from people over the email, and I think we have already enough people to have a meeting that night.
Okay, so are we in agreement that that can happen?
Does that give you as staff enough time to put everything together for next month? And mail out the two-week notice?
Yeah, I think so. It'll cut us a little bit short, but we can, we'll be able to get it together.
I'm going to put this in my phone right now because the last time I didn't put stuff down and things changed. I get a flurry of text messages.
Where are you?
Some upcoming agenda items, there's an update on the lake. Do you want to address this, Eric?
Yeah, I think in the council packet last Monday was a summary of all of the Lake Auburn-related changes to make sure that the council doesn't have any more to make before we bring them back to Planning Board. We can email that out to the board, take a look at it. We're going to start either June or July bringing those back. I think we're going to wait for one more call with Manager's Office and Legal Counsel on that to decide if it's June or July. But those will be coming back soon.
And then the zoning discussions?
So those would be starting to talk again about the areas A, B, C, and D, as we called them. So expansions of the T42B zoning district within New Auburn, some of the neighborhoods on the east side of Center Street. But getting back to looking at where we have water and sewer, allowing for mixed housing types in, in those neighborhoods.
And then for this coming month, there's also the project proposal for 186 Main Street, which we've had an application for. So that's going to be, it's a big one, that'll be coming to us. We also just have, this is pretty simple, it's an, it's an extension request for that 607 Lewis and Junction Road recycling plant project. They're getting held up in the permitting, I think, so, or the licensing, rather. So that's their request. And, oh, and obviously the GB, GB 2 discussion and, and the AG income standard. And I'm trying to think, is there anything else that I'm missing?
I don't think so, and I think we can work with the chair as we get closer to make sure we have a manageable agenda. It's going to be big with the AG zone coming back to also do the Lake Auburn watershed, so that may not happen at that same night, so...
Yeah, there's a zone change, there's a petition that submitted, but...
To...
37.
Make a change or not make a change?
To make a change from your urban residential to multifamily suburban. 37 Loring Ave, the parcel land.
Did they submit the signature yet? I mean, the, the...
Yes.
Aren't we required to review it within like 30 or 60 days, something like that?
We can, we can double-check the date.
I think it's the kind of thing, like unless they decide they don't want us to, then we're under a time crunch here.
Oh, yeah, like for this next meeting, I, yeah, that's, I think I... Yeah, that's, I think I just forgot to...
We'll work with them on that if there is a timing issue.
Are we good? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Alls in favor?